Oh, okay. Okay, there I will. Oh. You caught on one of ours?
What?
Did you get caught on one of ours?
Oh, the sign in? No. I don't. Yeah, because the budget meeting stuff was on our laptop.
He figured it out, yeah. I would now like to call the June 17th, 2025 Longmont City Council Regular Session to order. The live stream of this meeting can be viewed at the city's YouTube channel or at longmontpublicmedia.org/watch or Comcast Channels 8 or 880. May we have a roll call, please, Dawn?
Absolutely. Mayor Peck.
Here.
Councilmember Christ.
President.
Mayor Protemi Doggelfaring.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
President.
Councilmember Popkin.
President.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor Yevkorm.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder to the public, in accordance with this council's rules of procedure, the rules for providing public comment are as follows. Only Longmont residents and employees of the city of Longmont may speak during the first call public invited to be heard. You must provide your address on the sign up sheet before the meeting, or I will not go, I will not call your name. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anyone may speak on the second reading or public hearing item, and you're asked to add your name to the speaker list for that specific item before the meeting. Anyone may speak during final call public invited to be heard. Members of the audience shall refrain from disruptive vulgar or abusive language, applause, heckling, or other actions that interfere with the orderly function of a council. So now I need a motion for the June 3rd, 2025 Regular Session Minutes.
Can I move the June 3rd, 2025 Regular Session Minutes?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor McCoy, seconded by Councilor Yarborough. Is there any discussion or amendments to those? Councilor Christ?
I'm just looking at Section 5, the Agenda Revisions, and motions to direct, to add agenda items. And it's talking about the, my direction to staff to include a grid overlay and location of short-term rentals. In addition to the renewal innovation overlay zone map is the way it's recorded, but I remember it being the urban renewal overlay zone map. And so I need to know from Councilor Popkin, what was his intention for that layer?
Pardon me?
It is on, that's number five, and it is on page three.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Christ. Were you just referring to what the title, what the name of it was called, effectively?
Yeah, what was the?
Yeah, what we had, what we had previously moved for was on the, it was called the Urban Renewal Innovation Zone.
Urban Renewal Innovation Zone.
Yeah, that was, that was the previous term, though I'm not particularly wedded to that if we think there's a better name going forward.
Okay.
But if that was just to clarify what that was, to make sure it was consistent.
What I was adding on to, yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
If we could just substitute on the Urban Renewal Innovation Zone.
So do you move to amend the?
Yes, please.
Can we have? Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Motion? All right, so Councilor Christ would like to amend the minutes to say Urban Renewal Zone instead of, what did it say?
Urban Renew?
Urban Renewal Innovation Zone.
Renewal, okay, Urban Renewal.
To replace Renewal Innovation Overlay Zone.
With Urban Renewal.
Yeah, Urban Renewal Innovation.
Okay, let's vote on that amendment. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on that amendment.
Mayor, we did have a motion to approve on the floor.
I can just.
Do you want to withdraw that motion, or do you, would you like to?
I, I would with amendments.
With amendments?
Accept the amendments, okay.
I'm confused. What, what are we doing? We have to approve the amendment and then approve the minutes as amended.
We did, we'd had a live motion to approve the minutes on the floor. That was moved and seconded, so I was just clarifying.
Okay.
Were we doing a friendly amendment, or do you want two votes?
That's acceptable.
Friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Friendly amendment.
Thank you.
So let's vote on the minutes as amended with the friendly amendment. Friendly amendment made by Councilor Christ. That passes unanimously. Now we're at Agenda Revisions and Submissions of Documents, motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas. Is there anyone on council that would like to add an agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to city manager's report.
No report, mayor, council.
Thank you. We're at Special Reports and Presentations, and we do have a proclamation tonight for Juneteenth. This is a proclamation, June, designating June 2025 as honoring Juneteenth month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, commemorates the end of slavery in the United States and celebrates the spirit of resilience and determination of Black Americans who have overcome centuries of oppression and discrimination to shape our nation's history and culture. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas to announce the end of the Civil War and the abolition of slavery, marking a pivotal moment in the fight for freedom and equality for African-Americans. Whereas Juneteenth has been recognized as a state holiday in Colorado since 2022, and its observance offers an opportunity to reflect on the ongoing struggle for racial justice and to celebrate the contributions and achievements of the Black community. Whereas Colorado's Black community has a rich and diverse history, from the pioneers who settled in the state during the 19th century, to the activists who fought for civil rights during the 20th century, to the artists, athletes, and entrepreneurs who continue to make their mark today. Whereas we must continue to work towards creating a more equitable and just society for all Coloradoans, and recognizing the contributions and struggles of the Black community is an essential step towards achieving that goal. Now therefore, I, Joan Peck, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as honoring Juneteenth month in Longmont and encourage the people of the city of Longmont to observe Juneteenth Day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Do we have Ms. Woodley, or, oh, we have Polly Christensen here to accept this?
Oh, you are?
Okay. Can you turn the mic on, please, and then pull it up a bit? Thank you.
Yes, I, I don't mean to steal the light away from Polly Christensen, but Madeline did ask me to say that, that we would like to recognize Polly for the work that she has done in celebrating Juneteenth, as she was right there beside Madeline, as she founded the Juneteenth celebrations here in Boulder County. But we just wanted to make sure we didn't gloss over that, and that's the reason why she's receiving the proclamation, so we are very grateful for her.
Would you mind giving your name for the people in the chamber?
I'm sorry, my name is Robert Morris III.
And how are you with this delegation?
I have, I've been working with Madeline and with, with Madeline quite a bit through the last year and a half, through the transitioning of E-Case from a sole proprietorship into a 501(c)(3), and helping with putting on the, putting on various Juneteenth events we have, we've had so far, like the flag raising that we had this morning, which many of the council members and the mayor so graciously attended.
Thank you. So Polly, do you want to say a couple of words, or just come up and receive the proclamation?
Thank you. Turn that back.
No, it isn't.
There you go.
Okay. I'm really honored by this award. As I told Madeline, mostly all I did was nag for several years, the Multicultural Action Committee and the city council and, anyway, but Juneteenth is a holiday for every American, and it is arguably more important than the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July is when we celebrate our liberty from monarchy, aristocracy, and church, which ruled everything. When it was declared that we had the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, actually only male, white, rich Protestant landowners had that right. As Frederick Douglass said, "What is the Fourth of July to me or my people?" So Juneteenth is when America began to be what it claimed to be. Equal rights in every state enforced by federal law, because the law without enforcement is meaningless. It was not that the enslaved people of Texas did not know that they were free, they had been freed since 1863, but there was nothing they could do about it without federal enforcement. They were freed by June 19th, 1865, in Galveston with the arrival of the army to enforce that law. Federal enforcement is important, but it has to always be to preserve justice and people's rights, not to take them away. Anyway, I hope we all have, and it took many, many people to create Juneteenth, including the city council, Strategic Multichampionship, Betty Nanali, Pat Davis, Madeline Strong and her sister, Reverend Strong, yeah.
Robinson.
And of course, Shakita, who, Shakita Yarbo, who created a wonderful event in the park, which really is a great celebration. So thank you all, and have a good Fourth of, good Juneteenth, and really appreciate what, how lucky we are. Thank you.
Polly, do you want a picture with us while you?
I'll take that to Madeline, yeah.
Picture? No picture?
Oh, yeah, okay.
(laughter)
Okay. Very good. One, two, three. One more. Thank you.[1066.54][1066.54](applause)
We are now at first call, whoops. No, we have a presentation. I saw Teresa there, and I thought, oh. This is a presentation of the city of Longmont's annual comprehensive financial report and independent audit for 2024. I see Teresa Malloy to start off this presentation.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm Teresa Malloy, Chief Financial Officer, and this evening we are presenting our 2024 audited financial statements. Before we get into the specifics, I did want to take just a few minutes to let you know that accounting has once again received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from GFOA for our 2023 annual comprehensive financial report. So just a little bit of background on the GFOA award. GFOA established the financial reporting program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirement of generally accepted accounting principles, to prepare financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeeded in achieving that goal. So the goal of the award program is not to assess financial health of participating governments, but rather to ensure that users of their financial statements have the information they need to do so themselves. So there are 19 separate categories of criteria that financial reports must meet in order to achieve the award. And I am very pleased to tell you that the city has received this award for 45 times over the past few years. So this speaks to the dedication and experience of our accounting team, who ensure our financial reporting and tracking really does go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. While members of our accounting team are not necessarily providing a direct support to our community, they are very much a critical part of city operations. I am extremely thankful for Deanne Hansen, our accounting manager, who unfortunately could not be here with us tonight, Suzie McGinley, and Sammy Colson, who is also not with us tonight, are our lead accountants, and, and all of the rest of the accounting team for the hard work and dedication it has taken to win this award. I am very confident that our 2024 report and audit that you're about to hear about will also meet the criteria to achieve the, to actually get the award for a 46th time. Okay, so really briefly, the city engaged Plaid Moran to perform the audit of our financial statements. Bill Bricky and Josh Idy, who is not here this evening, directed the audit, and Bill Bricky will present auditor comments and responses to any questions that you all may have. So to briefly summarize 2024, the city finished with a total net position of $1.71 billion. The governmental activities make up $692 million of that, and the business type activities make up the remaining little over million, $1 billion. So that's a net increase in position, an increase in net position of $153 million from '23. You can see financial highlights associated with the citywide net position in the management discussion and analysis, starting on page 28 of the ACFIR. More relevant information pertaining to fund balances and changes in net position of the major governmental funds can be found on page 46 and 48 of the ACFIR, as well as a summary of fund balances in the council communication on page three. The major enterprise fund net position and working capital information can be found on page 53 through 55 of the ACFIR and on page five of the council communication. Total assets held in trust for retirement benefits equal $230.3 million. This information can be found on pages 237 through 238 of the ACFIR and page five of the council communication. So I wanted to point those pages out because it's a, it's a pretty technical document, but those are really the, the key highlights for you. So now I'm going to turn it over to Bill, who is going to present the audited information for you, and he'll be able to answer any questions.
Teresa, can I, would you mind telling us what GFOA stands for?
Government Finance Officers Association. So it's a national organization for government entities to belong to, it's, it's really governments across the whole United States as well as Canada.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. So as mentioned, I'm Bill Bricky, the lead auditor on, on your account, and here to talk about the audit results for the year ended December 31, 2024. So when we talk about the audit, really there's, I'd say, three separate deliverables that we speak to. One would be the, the financial statements themselves, so the ACFIR, as Teresa just mentioned. Then we also have our single audit report, which is our report of your compliance with federal grants. And then we have our end of audit letter to mayor and council, which is a required item under the auditing standards. So before I get started, I just want to take a brief moment and really thank, you know, your entire team, Teresa, Deanne, Suzie, Sammy, everyone for the great job they do. We actually start the audit late March, early April, and kind of go through June. And so we're, we're kind of taking up a lot of their time for two to three months, and they just do a great job getting us what we need so we can complete the audit in an efficient manner. And we really appreciate, you know, all of their efforts throughout the process. So we have covered all of the, all of these documents, you know, in detail with management. Our goal tonight is really just to highlight a couple of things. I understand when you look at the financial statements, it's over 300 pages, so we don't want to go through all of those. And when I make my comments, and I, I'll refer to the pages, but I'll try and explain what they are, so you don't really need to be looking at it to understand what I'm going through. So the first item I want to talk about is our, is our main deliverable to you as your auditors, and that is our opinion on your financial statements. So the financial statements are prepared by management, Deanne and her team, and then we review them, test all the balances, and then we provide you an opinion that speaks to the material accuracy of those statements. So included in the statements on page 25 through 27 is our audit opinion on those statements. And happy to report, the city did receive what we refer to as an unmodified audit opinion, again, in the current year, which essentially means the financial statements are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. We often, you know, refer to that as a clean audit report, so happy to be able to give you that news. As mentioned, in addition to doing the audit of your financial statements, we also have to test your compliance with federal grants. And so in the current year, the city received and expended about $7.1 million in federal funds, and we specifically tested your compliance with two specific grants. So you spent about $3 million of American Rescue Plan funds in 2024, and about $3.2 million in highway planning and construction grant funds. And so we test that you're complying with all the rules and regulations that you sign up for when you take that, those federal dollars. And again, happy to report, we did not have any compliance issues related to our testing there. So again, more or less a clean audit report on your compliance with the federal grants. We'll, we'll point out that that single audit report is included in the statements on page, all the way back, 293 through 301. So if you wanted to see all of the federal grants that were received in the current year, you could see those on that page. There is one sort of unusual thing in the current year, so there was one audit finding in the current year, not really related to the city's audit, but the housing authority's audit. So the way it works is, the housing authority is a component unit of the city, which means they get their own audit by another auditor, but then we take that and put it into your financial statements. And their auditor identified one material weakness in, in their statements, and essentially what it was is, when they did the audit, they needed to make an adjustment to federal grant revenue at the housing authority level to be able to properly state the financial statements. So they found an error, it was corrected, it's just required to be reported. And if you wanted to see the corrective action plan for that, that's included in page 303 of that document. So again, not necessarily related to the city, but is included in your report because of your affiliation with the housing authority. I want to spend just a minute and talk about our end of, our end of audit report. It's the six-page letter that's addressed to mayor and council. And really what this letter is, it's required communication under the auditing standard on a whole variety of things. And as, as I highlight a couple of things, the good news, it's, it's a pretty boring letter, because again, we don't have any audit findings to discuss with you tonight. If we did, they'd be disclosed in this document. But a couple of things I want to highlight. So included in inner document on page two, there's a section kind of near the bottom. Just want to point out that the city did implement a new accounting standard in the current year. It's called Government Accounting Standard Number 101, and that relates to the valuation of your compensated absences. Now, this standard doesn't change the way you provide benefits, the way you pay benefits, the way employees can take benefits, but what it did is, is kind of changed the way those are valued and reported in the financial statements. It didn't have a significant impact on what you used to do, but if you looked in the statements, you would see some restatements and things like that because of the implementation of this standard, so I wanted to point that out. In addition, one of the things we always have to comment on is the estimates that are included in the financial statements. So obviously, not everything is known at the end of the year, and so there are some estimates that are made in, in the financial statements. The most significant estimates in your financial statements are really the valuation of the pension liability and the other post-employment benefit out, liability. pension liability and the other post-employment benefit liability. So the, the city hires an actuary to calculate, calculate those numbers, and they're, they're big liability numbers. And then we test the assumptions and the inputs to make sure that they're, they're valid, and again, happy to report that we did not have any issues with the estimates as they were calculated. And then the remainder of this letter, again, just goes through a lot, a lot of required items, but basically says, you know, we didn't have any disagreements with management, we did not identify any journal entries, and, and we don't have any other, other items to report to you tonight. So I would just say, you know, in summary, you know, the audit went very well, the city continues to have a strong internal control process in place, and really, your finance team continues to do a great job maintaining the records and really, you know, doing a great job preparing for the audit. So with that, that was all the prepared comments I have. I'd be happy to address any questions or anything that I, that I didn't cover tonight.
Seeing none, thank you very much, and congratulations on that award.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We're now at First Call Public Invited to Be Heard. The first person on the list is Jeff Southard, and remember that we need your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Oh, my name's Jeff Southard. I live at eight-hundred Lincoln Street, Apartment A, in Longmont. And Mayor Peck, city council members, thank you for your time. Little background on myself, we've been out here for about eight years now, and after a successful career in pharmaceutical drug discovery and drug development, I decided to step back from that after thirty years and find a job where I could, it's a quality of life change, so I could get back to my community. I found that job, been doing it for three and a half years, I love it, love the people I work with. What I found, though, is now we're getting ready to move. We're getting ready to find a new apartment. And we've been looking, and because I had to take a substantial pay cut, okay, because it is a community service-type job, I found out that, having not really looked for an apartment here in Longmont recently, I found out everything's either heavily subsidized, older construction, there's now new construction, thank God, and hats off to that. But what I found out is that with my current income, our current income, we make way too much for the subsidized or income-based housing, not enough to go into some of the new construction. And I kind of got frustrated at that. I've never been in that position, ever. Matter of fact, the whole thing was new to me. But I also found out, in talking to my coworkers, it's a big deal. It's a very big deal. And what I found out was that you're talking about, I know the average rent is probably somewhere around nineteen-hundred, two thousand here for a two-bedroom apartment. What I looked up was median income is around forty-five, forty-eight, something like that, thousand a year. And when you look at that, it's very tough to meet the guidelines to get an apartment when they do the income checks. And we will find one, I have faith in that, we've got a lot on, a lot on our plate with that. But I want to encourage the city council to look into what I've heard, finally found out, was called the missing middle. And having never been in that position, now discovering that that is a real issue here in Longmont, I think it's a big place to look into. I know it's difficult, I looked up what middle, you know, missing middle was, and sure enough, it's a hard, difficult place to build. I get it. But I want to encourage you to, maybe we can think creatively, out of the box, to figure out how to do this. Because I can tell you, I'm one and a half years from full retirement, okay? Once that happens, I, we're going to be on limited income, we won't be able to stay here. As much as we love the natural resources around here and take advantage of it, we're not going to be able to do it. So I just want to encourage you.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Camille Southard, Southard?
Hello, my name is Camille Southard. I also live at eight-hundred Lincoln Street, ditto to what Jeff just said. Basically, I have the same speech. We are finding ourselves in a precarious situation where our landlord just passed away unexpectedly, and I won't go into details, but everything went to the bank. And so here we are, our lease ends the end of June, and they're giving us till the end of July to find something else. So we are searching and searching. We've had a great deal for the last eight years. It's been very affordable, we've been very, very fortunate, but you cannot find anything in that price range anywhere in Longmont, so we're having to really figure out what we're going to do. Most everything is about $500 more than what we've been paying, and we really didn't want to go into an apartment, but we're finding that we're probably going to have to. So we've been searching for homes. We have found a couple in the eighteen-fifty range to two thousand. Some of them are much higher than that, but they are nothing. They don't have the closet space, they don't have the, the room that we are needing. So again, the missing middle is really what we're trying to drill into, and it would just be so great to have something like that, that is affordable. And like right now, we live in the historic West Side, and it's beautiful, you know, we have wonderful neighbors, and we're just so grateful for that, but we are going to have to move out of there. So yeah, we're just looking for something more affordable. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Lance Whitaker.
My name is Lance Whitaker. I live at seventeen-fifty Collier Street, Longmont, Colorado. I'd like to mention today is National Mascot Day, National Cherry Tart Day, National Apple Strusel Day, National Eat Your Vegetables Day, National Root Beer Day. So just take that into mind. I'd like to also address that there's a lot of potholes in the city, and if we could budget more to the streets this year, it would be great. I don't know of any streets that don't have potholes. So, you know, I, it's sort of pointless to call you guys and tell you where all the potholes are, especially when they're on almost every street. So, thank you, and have a nice day.
The next one is, thank you, Lance. The next one is Ryan Forbes.
Ryan Forbes, twenty-two-twenty Water Song Circle. And on the topics about, like, finding affordable housing or apartments in Longmont, that is probably one of the biggest issues in Longmont and in Colorado, and probably in the country. And two things that could help out Longmont to get more, get more affordable housing would be annexing more land and building more, more apartments or condos or whatever, or houses that can come up, and, and making them affordable and attainable for most people, because most people who are living in Longmont are going to be below the median income. And I, seeing with the Quail Ridge, Quail Road on the agenda, think working with them, finding out strategies to get more affordable and attainable housing, in whatever form that needs to be, is going to help bring people in this area, allow them to live and work here, which is going to be, going to help Longmont in, in the long term. And also, I know that you have done a lot to bring more, like, working with True North and finding thing, finding out Lance do that, which is great. And I just hope to see that continue. And since I have a little bit of time left, I just want to say that, this is the second time I've been here where we, like, there's been a proclamation about Juneteenth. And for me personally, the proclamation about Juneteenth is interesting, considering it talks about, in the proclamation, it talks about the end of slavery in this country. However, it hasn't. Even in the Thirteenth Amendment, it doesn't end slavery, it only makes a loophole for it, which there are many people in the U.S. and in this state who still are enslaved and do, perform slave labor, and, and they're majority are, or inordinately minority. And I would love to see more ways that we can actively try and prevent that here and, and overall, like, here and in Colorado and in the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Charles Schelling.
Hello, my name is Charlie Schelling, and I live at two-two-Vor Francis Street. Good evening, mayor and council. So here we are again, same old issue, residents are talking about housing, concerned with a variety of things. My concerns, and I think a lot of people's concerns, are traffic congestion and compatibility with new housing projects adjacent to their homes that they invested in and just want to live a peaceful and safe life. So are you listening to this? So I understand and agree with the need for more housing. I just think we need to be a lot more thoughtful about how and where we put this new housing. There are many issues with the latest Quail Road proposal, but I'll focus on the key issue. This is the kind of density that does not belong there. It will drive too much traffic and congestion in that area and into neighborhoods throughout our city. So I've been told that our transit systems can solve this traffic problem around high-density around the city, and solve the congestion issues, and we'll just put a bus stop by this development to mitigate any traffic and congestion issues resulting from putting three hundred units at this location. Well, there's two questions with this approach that the people of Longmont want to understand. Can you state with confidence that rideshare and RTD will be funded next month, next year, in ten years and twenty years? These units, if built, will be there for decades. Will it have funding to support this, this paradigm, this type of transit? And the second question is, since we want to be data-driven and system-oriented, if there's bus service at this delivery, at this development, will the majority of residents use it in the majority of the time? How many people are using buses from other apartment complexes? We, we should be able to have this data. What's a local RTD ridership? Now, I'm all about transit, and I think transit's good, but I'm also about truth, and let's, let's be real and try to figure out a solution that we think will work, and we have data behind it. Is it trending in the right direction to support your premise? Is there a way to find a middle ground for us that works for residents that live near this proposal, and also for those that need more housing? Wouldn't it make more sense to drive higher-density housing closer to our transit hubs and shopping? Not anywhere and everywhere, as some pro-housing advocates have said. Why can't we moderate density of housing that's more than a quarter-mile away from transit hubs and shopping, and drive density closer to our planned transit hubs and shopping, like along Main Street and some of the underutilized industrial sites near our transit hubs? I know you're thinking about this, but I think good urban planning steers density to be near these hubs, and we should look at this. I also think we should use transition zones in middle, missing-middle homes, as we've been talking about, in new developments versus this apartment complex that's being planned. So Quail Road doesn't do that. High-density housing like this needs to be placed within a quarter-mile of transit hubs and shopping. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Dan Sorrels.
Mayor Peck and council, my name is Dan Sorrels, and I live at three-twenty-eight Grant Street in Longmont. I'm here to speak in support of the Quail Road annexation. I'm also here as a Launch Longmont Housing representative. Launch is an organization advocating for more and better housing, more and better. Both words are important. Quick plug, Launch meets on the first and third Mondays of each month, and we invite all points of view to discuss what we need and how to get there. And last night's meeting was a perfect illustration. We had two people from the Schlegel neighborhood came to explain their viewpoints and concerns about the site at the eighty-nine-oh-two Quail Road and about what they've seen proposed to date. And it was a spirited discussion, to say the least, but it ended with a common understanding that we're really all on the same page. We need more housing, but it needs to be done correctly, more and better. As I listen, one big concern that, is that the developer's proposal would be primarily for rent, not for sale. The implication, intentional or not, is that somehow renters are somehow inherently worse for the community. But from the city's point of view, and from being a little presumptuous here, anyone who is contributing to the betterment of Longmont is a positive. I can't imagine it would matter if the residents rented or owned. If they contribute, it seems like we want them to be a part of our community. People have many personal or valid reasons for renting, and it isn't a question of morality or lack of ties to the community. It may be a simple economic calculation, it's certainly more affordable, to the tune of about eight-hundred or a thousand per month difference right now between owning and renting. And it may be a personal one, that's not for me to say. Further rentals would add diversity to the area. According to the census data, ninety-six percent of the units in the two affected census blocks are now a single family. The three-hundred or so units proposed would change that to about seventy-eight percent single-family. And that's, the citywide average is around sixty-two percent. And this gets me back to the more and better, and why both are equally important. I think everyone agrees that more housing is needed, whether it's rental or for sale is beside the point. First comes the more through the annexation, next comes the better through civil, civil discourse and give and take. I witnessed and participated in the discussion last night that could have gotten personal and more heated, but reason prevailed. I have no doubt that, that as we continue this process, let's begin with referring eighty-nine-oh-two Quail into the annexation review process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Drew Sorrels.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, city council members. Drew Sorrels, three-twenty-eight Grant Street. Whoops.
You're good.
Okay. I'm done. I'm a Longmont resident and lifelong advocate for housing that supports the full spectrum of our community, and I want to talk tonight about supporting the Quail annexation development and the urgent need for attainable housing, specifically the missing middle. And we all know that it's those earning between eighty and one-hundred-and-twenty percent of the area median income. These are teachers, first responders, healthcare workers, and tradespeople, and they don't qualify for subsidized housing, but they also can't afford to buy in Longmont's current market. And we are at risk of losing them as Longmont residents. This need for attainable housing is deeply personal to me. My developmentally-disabled brother spent twenty-five years in a nursing home before we found a program through Imagine in Boulder County that gave him the chance to live safely in a shared home with others. That changed everything for him and for me. It showed me that everyone deserves a home, no matter their income or ability. Now, my sister and brother-in-law, hard-working Longmont citizens, are being asked to leave their home. They want to stay in the area, but they can't afford to buy. They're now looking for a place to rent, and they're not alone. I think we can do better together. I'm asking the city to take specific action. I think we can make it easier to build attainable housing. We can budget for a system that manages attainable housing contracts to qualify buyers, ensure long-term affordability, and protect those homes for people they're intended for. I think we can incentivize, incentivize developers to build for the eighty to two-hundred-and-twenty percent AMI range through reduced fees, expedited permitting, and flexible zoning. I think we can prioritize infill projects like Quail. I think we can prioritize infill projects like Quail that build housing where it belongs, near transit, schools, parks, and jobs. How can Longmont make it easier for the Quail annexation project to provide even more attainable homes? They're already making an extraordinary commitment to a 15% partnership with Habitat for Humanity, which would be the largest habitat community in Longmont by a wide margin. This creates affordable homes, and we also need attainable homes. So I'm here with a willingness to be part of the solution for attainable housing. Let's work together to create Longmont, a Longmont that truly makes room for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Steve Altshuler.
Steve Altshuler, 1555 Taylor Drive. And when your mark gets echo. I'd like to point out, since everyone's talking about housing tonight, I have brought this up before, but basically you can get a $600,000 home for $465,000, except for the 23% of fees and costs that the city adds to every house that's being built. Whether it's the utility fees, the sewer line, licensing fees, whatever it is, nationwide, the average is about 23%. So the city is largely responsible for how expensive everything has gotten. On a secondary note, Mayor Peck, you've advocated several times for getting rid of natural gas. And as I've pointed out before, electric is three to four times the cost of natural gas. So if that plan got implemented, then the average monthly bill would be at least $200 to $400 per month more per house, if not a lot more than that, depending on how much electricity they use. So when people are here complaining about the price of homes, the people in the council need to take a look and say, you know, there's other things we can do besides grinding on the builders, cut back on your fees, and make things more affordable. And the other thing is, people have been up here before speaking and said that there are hundreds of vacant apartments right now, and there are thousands more that have been approved that haven't even broken ground yet. So maybe instead of just building thousands and thousands of low-income apartments that can be part of Longmont Housing Authority, you could take some of that, and I know we've talked before with the problems with condominiums. But is there anything happening with the concept of taking a 10-year-old apartment building and converting it to condos and letting those be sold? There are some other solutions besides just always more building all the time, especially when you figure what's already been approved. We don't need 80,000 homes and apartments with 20,000 of them vacant. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Faros Tiar.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Faros Tiar at 10650 North 75th Street. I'm here tonight to discuss, rather praise, the global safety initiative our city is trying to adopt, known as Vision Zero. As has been frequently mentioned in city council meetings I've attended before, I became curious, thus I wanted to learn more information. I did a quick online search months ago, and about two Thursdays ago, I attended a Vision Zero Task Force meeting for the first time. Along with my curiosity, I had a compelling and questioning thought. Does the initiative give consideration to the physical condition of the roadways when factoring various hazards and dangers? Fortunately, partially due to me bringing up the matter, our local task force will make/include physical roadway conditions as part of our implemented version of Vision Zero. Overall, I would roughly ballpark my support of the initiative at about 87%, because I'm 100% in support of reducing car/ mode of transportation crash-related deaths to zero. Thank God, unless I'm sadly mistaken, Longmont is still at zero this year. If we are, let's keep it up. While I understand and want to learn more about specific perspectives, the roughly 13% of support I'm holding back focuses on an area I'm concerned and honestly not in support of: red light and speeding cameras. If our task force can strategize safer driving techniques or multiple ways to avoid the further/ future implementation of those cameras, that would be ideal, realistically speaking. Sadly, it's probably not going to happen. That said, I just want there to be an equilibrium between achieving zero fatalities and protecting our constitutional rights, among them proper searches and/or obtaining, you know, correctly obtaining personal/ private information. Thus, in closing, I want to thank Kami and Dylan for coordinating this task force, and I look forward one day to supporting the Vision Zero Initiative 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Faros. Doug Sykes. Is Doug Sykes here? I'll go on to the next one. Tracy Banyas.
Good evening. Tracy Banyas, 1409 Clover Creek Drive. Kami up here really kind of makes me a little sick, so you can see that it's an important issue to me that I'm back up here. Shout out to Councilmember Popkin. I heard you in a neighborhood. My neighbor said that you had popped by her house, so good for you for meeting the Ward Two residents. So we appreciate that. I'm here tonight because council was going to vote no in February on this proposal for Quail Road annexation. And I don't believe that there's been significant enough changes or improvement to vote differently now. It's great that Habitat for Humanity has committed to inviting now to the 15%, but density is still the same, the maximum amount of density. And I know that a lot of residents showed up and said that that was just, that's too much for our area. It does not, it's not compatible with the neighborhood. And the same proposal doesn't address all of the community concerns regarding traffic. We're in the Clover Creek neighborhood, again, having that one entrance and exit. It's very difficult, again, and also the impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods. It's still 85% rentals, and there are so many rental apartments nearby already. And we've heard people saying that the more you build, the more affordable it will get. And they're not affordable. I actually looked at some townhomes that were built, and they're very expensive. And so I don't think just building is going to bring down prices. We need more homes for purchase. And just last month, a new construction defect bill was signed into law, so it makes it much more feasible to build condos again. That was one of our issues last time, but people were saying you can't build condos. Now you can. Lastly, well, no, not lastly, but let me check my time. Okay. Why approve this referral if it doesn't move the needle on affordability? And the gentleman before me said that we need to build more and then build better, more and then make it better. And the problem is that more becomes permanent, and then you cannot make it better. You don't have that opportunity. And as we spoke last time in February, this is one of those rare opportunities that you can really build best the first time and build something that the community really embraces and wants. And again, we're not for no building, just build the right thing in the right spot. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Charlene Hamlet. Okay. All right. Seeing no one else on the list, I am going to close. First call public invited to be heard. Are we all okay up here? Do we need break? Looks like we're all good. So we are now on to our consent agenda and introduction and reading by title of first reading ordinances. Dawn, would you mind reading the consent agenda into the record?
Absolutely, Mayor. And I'll just point out, there are no ordinances on tonight's consent agenda, so no need to introduce public hearing date. 9A is Resolution 2025-32, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs for grant funding for the Longmont Local Down Payment Assistance Program. 9B is Resolution 2025-33, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing the assignment of the city's private activity bond allocation for 2025 to the Longmont Housing Authority, providing other details in connection therewith and providing an effective date. Item 9C is Resolution 2025-34, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the city and county of Broomfield, Boulder County, the city of Boulder, the city of Lewisville, the city of Lafayette, the town of Lyons, and the town of Superior for a Home Investment Partnerships Program Consortium. Item 9D is Resolution 2025-35, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing a public trail easement agreement and temporary construction easement agreement for the Hayes property in Weld County in connection with the St. Vran Greenway Phase 13 Trail Project. 9E is Resolution 2025-36, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing the First Amendment to the conservation easement between Shirley Mae Hayes and City of Longmont for the Hayes property in Weld County, Colorado. And Item 9F is approve inclusion of the Heat Action Plan into Climate Action Recommendations Report and Longmont Indicators Platform.
Thank you. So that is the consent agenda. Do council, any councils want to pull any items? I see Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I wanted to pull Item 9F on the Heat Action Plan from the consent agenda.
Okay. Would you like to move the agenda then? Minus nine, I'm sorry, what was it F?
9F.
Okay.
Sure. Seeing no other council members there, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item 9F.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy and seconded by Counselor Mayor Hidagel.
Popkin moved it. I second it.
I heard all three voices. I'll do this over. So the consent agenda, minus 9F, was moved by Counselor Popkin, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hidagel Ferring. Let's vote. And that was approved unanimously. We are now at ordinance on second reading and public hearing on any item. The first one is A, a public hearing on 2025-2029 Regional CDBG Home Consolidation Plan and Consideration of Recommendations for Longmont's 2025 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Action Plan, Affordable Housing Fund, and Attainable Housing Fund allocations. We have LHA staff here to present.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Kristy Wiseman, the city's housing investment manager. And I have with me here Lucy McGee and Molly Fitzpatrick, our consultants for the consolidated plan. So they will start our presentation, and then housing and community investment staff will jump in after that. And I just want to note, we have two public hearings as part of this presentation, and they will be prompted by the slides.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council. My name is Lucy McGee, and I am a research associate at Root Policy Research. We are a housing firm based in Denver, and we are assisting Longmont with their 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan, along with the Boulder Home Consortium. So I'll start off the presentation with a brief overview about what the consolidated plan is and what CDBG can go towards, some key findings from the needs assessment portion of the consolidated plan, a summary of the community engagement findings from the consolidated plan, and Longmont's 2025 to 2029 goals associated with their plan. And we will finish with public comment. So the consolidated plan is a requirement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It uses extensive data to inform goals, inform how the jurisdiction is going to use funding. The document is required every five years as a condition. There's an extensive community engagement process that also feeds how jurisdictions determine their goals. The funding for the Community Development Block Grant is very specific. It cannot be used to build housing, but it can be used to rehabilitate housing, and it can also lay down the infrastructure for housing. It can be used to construct public facilities and improve existing public facilities. It can go towards public services, but this is capped at 15%. And it can also be used to administer grant funding. This is also capped at 20%. Home funds can be used to create affordable rental and ownership housing. They can also be used to rehabilitate existing affordable housing with and alongside CDBG, and it can provide housing assistance principally for low-to-moderate-income people. So allocations just came out about a month ago. Longmont receives $489,000 a year for their CDBG. And then as part of the home consortium, they receive part of $935,000 that Boulder administers. So I'll provide a brief overview of the needs assessment portion of the consolidated plan. It's a very lengthy document. It's pretty hard to read, so I'll just hit some of the key affordability trends that a lot of people have been talking about here tonight. So first is that cost burden has filtered into higher-income brackets over time across jurisdictions and especially in Longmont. And affordable homeownership is only available to households with income over $100,000 without any sort of down payment assistance or deed restriction in the consortium. So if you take a look at Longmont there in the green, you can see that middle-income renters with incomes between $50,000 to $100,000 are the most, or saw the highest rate of change compared to other income brackets. So in 2018, only 6% of renter households earning $75,000 to $100,000 were cost-burdened, meaning that they spent more than 30% of their income on housing costs. But in 2023, this rose to 38%. Similarly, $50,000 to $75,000 went from 32% to 76%. So this trend is continuing across jurisdictions. It's certainly concerning to see it rising across and into higher-income brackets for renter households. We performed what's called a GAPS analysis within the homeownership market. This is when we compare the number of renters that we use as a proxy for potential owners to the number of affordable homes. And affordable homes is measured through value, interest rates, and the other costs that come with being a homeowner. So we compare those number of affordable homes with the number of renters. And since 2018, the number of available homes has diminished, so only those with household income above $100,000 have available homes to buy compared to 2018, when there were still some homes that were affordable if you had household income between $50,000 to $75,000. And as I mentioned, there's an extensive community engagement process along with the consolidated plan. For this, we talked to 48 stakeholders throughout the region. Most of those were service providers, and many of them were service providers in Longmont. So they pointed to vulnerable populations that had difficulty accessing housing. These populations were low-income families, individuals with eviction records or criminal histories, seniors, undocumented immigrants, and survivors of domestic violence. They also pointed to critical housing shortages across the spectrum from affordable rental units below 60% AMI all the way to affordable homeownership opportunities for middle-income families and older adults looking to downsize and find more accessible housing options. They pointed to service delivery challenges, including chronic underfunding, staff shortages, and administrative burdens that made it very difficult to administer services. And they celebrated the coordination efforts that this region is very good at, but pointed again to chronic underfunding that really hampered these efforts and coordination. Some key barriers to long-term stability and preventing things like homelessness and housing instability were the gaps in prevention services, so lack of funding for things like rental assistance, the lack of... rental assistance, the lack of continuous case management that leaves vulnerable groups more vulnerable to falling through the cracks and maybe more likely to fall into another crisis more quickly following their first interaction with the service. Additionally, we ran and fielded a resident survey in the region. The greatest housing challenge was no surprise worrying about rent increases and struggling to pay rent or mortgage. Longmont had the highest rate of respondents who were worried that their rent was going to go up to an amount that they couldn't afford, and 20% of respondents in Longmont reported that they struggled to pay rent or mortgage. There was a large section of this survey that asked people about services that may help them. Longmont residents identified down payment assistance, resources for mental health care, finding less expensive housing, financial help to move, and home buying classes as the most helpful. And then briefly, we also held four community meetings in Boulder, Broomfield, Longmont, and Lafayette. This is the home consortium area. And we also held two resident focus groups, one of which was in Longmont with residents in permanent and transitional housing and in-between property. So all of this community engagement and data fed Longmont's 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan goals, which are rental housing programs, homeownership programs for existing homeowners, homebuyer programs, housing stabilization and homeless services, community engagement programs, economic development programs, and administration. This graphic breaks down the financial year 2025 allocation, and since this is a five-year plan, it's multiplied by five there to give you what the consolidated plan funding looks like over those five years. Rental housing programs and homeownership programs receive the greatest allocation amounts. And the public can submit public comments to hci@longmontcolorado.gov, and public comments open for one more day on this plan.
Thank you, Lucy. Before we get into the public hearing component for the consolidated plan, I want to give council a chance to ask any questions on the data analysis or anything for the consolidated plan portion before we move into the second half of the presentation.
Mayor Pro Tim, Hidalgo-Faring.
Thank you, Mayor. One really small question that I noticed is the city of Boulder received a substantial amount more than the city of Longmont. Given our populations, we're getting close to the size of the city of Boulder. Do they provide any rationale as to why it's divvied up that way?
Yes, CDBG is also factoring in poverty, and the city of Boulder has a slightly higher poverty rate than Longmont does.
Okay, okay. And then with the findings, you know, and the other thing, and I can't, I was looking in my packet to find the page. I know, and something that I am noticing, as I, you know, I have a son with ADD, running into other people in the community who have adult children with disabilities who are living in our basements. And that need, and, you know, especially as I connect with other parents who are heading into their 60s and 70s, were worried about those, you know, housing and support systems in place for, once we pass, for the, you know, for our children's sustainability and survival. So has, in your conversations or in these focus groups, has there been discussion around that and looking for solutions? And I mean, and that's one segment. I mean, there are also, you know, we have an aging population, you know, there's several other needs, but I was curious to know that.
Definitely. Thank you for that. We had a focus group with older adults in Boulder, and that was certainly a theme that came up in terms of accessibility. And then in our stakeholder service provider groups, we had Imagine, their service providers joined us, Clinica Family Health, their number of service providers that provided input on ADD and needs of that community. And those are captured in the community engagement appendix that will be attached to this consolidated plan.
Okay, I knew I saw it somewhere, and I was like, where did I put it? I forgot to bookmark it. So thank you for bringing that up. I know I had found something. So, you know, the house, building the housing is one portion of it, but there are so many needs that our community needs, and I appreciate having this comprehensive plan put in place. So appreciate your work. Thank you.
Councillor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Councillor Member Hidalgo-Faring, I appreciate your question about the poverty rate there or the, uh-huh. I mean, let's be real, that's because of the student population predominantly in Boulder. So that, that is not our problem to solve, per se, but that is based on how the federal government measures things and different population socioeconomics, right?
Yep.
Okay. So putting that aside, because we can't address that today. I had a couple of questions about the survey methodology and particularly the populations represented in here.
Sure.
Before that, maybe there's a broader question I had on just the consortium area. So I'm seeing that this is the Longmont Consolidated Plan, but the, the survey area seems to be the broader consortium area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So when, when we're seeing the stats about kind of who participated in this, that's across the consortium area, not specific to Longmont, right?
That's right. I did break out the survey results by jurisdiction. I broke them out to the city of Boulder, Longmont, and other areas of Boulder County, and then Broomfield within the survey analysis.
I may have missed that page, because I saw that you had 85, there were 85 people from Longmont who, yes, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Like that breakdown? Okay, thank you. Then I didn't miss that, great. Yeah, so 85 of the 573 respondents to the survey were from Longmont, so those were Longmont residents.
Right.
That's about 14% of the survey here. I'm not one to question, like, survey methodologies, I realize this is looking at the broader consortium area. I just want to flag two, two other things that I noticed here. So first, 14, it looked like 14.3% of the respondents, oh, sorry, 140 of the 573 respondents reported being disabled of some, in some way, shape, or form. That's, so it's a 24% survey rate. It's quite a significant overrepresentation of disabled populations relative to the 14.3% that we have in Longmont, according to the U.S. Census. And then same with Hispanic residents here. The survey had 55 of 573, 500 of 500, sorry, 55 of 573 were Hispanic, which is less than 10% of the respondents here, yet Longmont's population is almost 25% Hispanic, according to the census. So just noting, like, a significant underrepresentation in the survey results there. Again, I'm not the survey methodologist here. I'm wondering if you can just speak to kind of the approach there that was used and kind of how, what methods beyond kind of what was briefly described here in the methodology?
Sure. So this was an online survey, and we used a methodology called snowball sampling. So we asked service providers to send out the links to their clients, and then we asked the clients to then share that with other people that they may know that may be in other similar situations. We also reached out to public housing authorities, and we shared the survey in English and in Spanish. We had flyers in both languages as well. At our community meetings, we also shared the survey. So given that it wasn't a statistically significant survey where everyone had an equal chance of being selected, there are certainly some bias towards older adults that may have had more time to take the survey or maybe saw at these community meetings that they attended. I'm definitely, I was a little bit disappointed to see that the, that we lacked some Hispanic representation in the survey. I think that we could have done a better job reaching out to that community, but at the end of the day, I think we did get a lot of really good feedback from people about the services that they needed, given that service providers were the ones that were delivering the survey link.
Thank you. That's helpful. When you say service providers, just for everyone here and anyone who's watching, can you just elaborate more on like what you mean by service providers? Like, we're not talking Netflix and Amazon Prime.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'm talking more about social services, so things like rental assistance, food pantries, community hubs, places where people can go to get resources from health and human services.
Gotcha. And then last question on this, how are the survey results then used to inform the plan? Right, because that's the, if there's an under or overrepresentation, really, it's, okay, that's data. The question is, what is that being used to inform, and what are we doing with that data? So I'm just curious, what's the, to use your term, the snowball effect of kind of what that translates to?
Sure. So we used it mostly in the consolidated plan for prompts that asked to describe an overview of, let's say, the proportion of a population that has a disability. We then used the survey to supplement that and say there are certain proportion of that, of the response with a disability that had these specific needs. So really, we just use it to fill out the macro data that we compiled for the consolidated plan and fill in the blanks and add more of a story to the broader trends.
Great. Thank you very much.
Seeing no one else in the queue, is there any more information you want to give us?
No.
We now have to hold a public hearing on this, but Harold, is there anything you want to say?
I was just going to remind you to hold the public hearing.
Thank you. I would have forgotten. So thank you very much for the presentation and all the information. It's very, very interesting and very much needed. So I'll now open the public hearing on this ordinance, 2025-2029, the Regional CDBG Home Consolidated Plan and Consideration of Recommendations for Longmont's 2025 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Is there anyone in the public here that would like to address it?
Sorry. Excuse me, Mayor. Just to clarify, this first public hearing is just for the consolidated plan. We will have a second public hearing at the end of the second half of the presentation specific to our CDBG spending plan for 2025.
Okay.
So this is just for the 2025 to 2029 Home Consortium Consolidated Plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
So seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on 2025-2029. Councillor Chris?
Adopt it.
You've said it is an ordinance, it's not an ordinance. It's accepting it.
Okay.
All right, I had comments for the public hearing. And then I'll move it.
I didn't hear anybody.
Yeah, we, at that time, already passed.
Yeah, that.
No, I only had mine.
She had it.
I had it on.
On the council comments? I didn't see it on here.
Sorry.
Okay, go for it.
Okay. We're getting organized. It's good. First of all, I know you have three other items on the agenda, Kristi, so thank you for all your hard work for our agenda. And let me just say about this plan, yay, and I feel like we're finally getting in alignment with everything the council talks about. And particularly what stuck out to me is that the rental market in Longmont largely serves renters earning $50,000 to $100,000 per year, and I'm just reading this from your plan, from your council communication. And also, Lucy, when you said 20, 29%, it says, of residents would like to buy a home but have the inability for a down payment, and 25% are saying that they just can't even consider buying a home. Okay, so your strategic goals are impressive, and I think they're things that we've been talking about. For one, that rental units below 50% are the ones that are most needed right now, below 50% AMI. And second, second, something that we've talked about at different times, but not as specifically as maybe we should, is that homeownership preservation in terms of rehabbing homes that you can afford. And we did talk about this at our city council retreat about the expenses of repairing, you know, necessary, like water heaters and what have you, have really, you know, accelerated in price. And so what can we do as a council to keep those expenses low for homeowners who are trying to maintain a home? All right, and then number three was new homebuyer opportunities, and I think one of the public mentioned House Bill 25-1272, which is condos for sale. And I wonder if, you're talking about innovative housing development models, and I'm wondering if you have considered what that might mean, what that House Bill might mean in terms of new development? And you can answer that in a minute if you want me to just continue on my list, and then we can go back. And then lastly, number six, economic development. Support for microenterprises and small businesses, that's something that I've been pushing, pushing, and is what I really appreciated here is you, you make, you draw the line between, the connection between housing and economic development. So thank you so much. This is very impactful. All right, so tell me what you think about building condos for sale, given the new House Bill.
Thank you for your questions, councillor member Chris. I might punt the condo to start to Molly and Harold for their insights.
That's a big, big question. So yes, there was legislation that was approved. It's a little bit too soon to tell. We are gonna be getting, going to begin reaching out to insurance companies and some of our development partners to, to get their take on how that legislation might impact their decision-making around condos. We don't know quite yet. We're hoping that everybody is out there doing a lot of analysis right now to help answer that question.
I think ultimately, the, the question lies with the insurance companies and how they're going to respond to this legislation, because it really is the insurance associated with, and I will just say, attached dwelling units, because it's not just condos in the typical sense that we think about it, it's any attached product. And, and so that's, I think, what everybody's waiting on, is to see what that response is going to be. I think I mentioned this to council before, on the first 55 units being built with True North, the insurance cost was a little over, let's just say, between 600 and 650,000, and not all of those units were attached. And so we'll see how the insurance companies respond to the legislative changes.
And you would be guessing, but how long do you think that would take?
I wish I could tell you. You know, I think everybody's working on their own timeframe.
Yeah.
I mean, that's completely in a different world.
Yeah. I got out, because you mentioned June 25th when we first talked about this, I got out the percentages you gave us for 80% AMI, and the maximum rents, so started at 2,700 at 80% AMI. And when you think that you would be also adding insurance and, insurance and property tax on a for-sale unit, you're talking about $3,000 a month. So initially, it says you have to have $84,000 in income, but I don't think that quite covers a $3,000 a month payment on for sale.
Councillor Member Chris, are you referring to the AMI chart and maximum rents?
Yes.
So I think you're conflating rental limits with a cost of your housing payment for a buyer.
Right, right.
So the buyer, you know, your monthly payment, your monthly housing cost as a buyer is really more driven by our max sales price methodology for deed-restricted homes, not the rental incomes in the, in that chart, on the AMI chart, are for rental projects only? Or am I misunderstanding your question?
No, I don't think you are misunderstanding my question, but what happens is when people are renting, they look at, well, it'd be cheaper to own. And not necessarily, when you look at these rates. So anyway, if no one else has any comment, I will move that we choose option number one and approve the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan, except the CDBG Affordable Housing Fund and Attainable Housing Fund Award Recommendations as presented, and approve the 2025 Annual Action Plan. Is that more than I should have done? Okay, so where should I have stopped? And I'll repeat it. First sentence?
Consolidated Plan.
Just the plan?
Yes.
Correct. Apologies, that's a lot in one.
It is, it's okay. Approve the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Chris, seconded by councillor McCoy. To approve the 2025-2029 Regional CDBG-home consolidated plan, let's vote. To approve the 2025-2029 Regional CDBG-home Consolidated Plan, let's vote.
I'm in the wrong section.
I'm a yes, Dawn, I can't get back. Okay, there we go, and that carries unanimously, thank you, everyone.
Mayor, can I jump in real quick?
Please, yes.
Based on some of the questions regarding for-sale product, I think one of the things I wanted to talk about is we're actually getting a really good dataset out of True North in terms of who was on the interest list, who applied for the home, who's actually qualifying as we're looking at the acquisition of that. And so this is really the first time I think anyone can really take a practical look at what's happening in the system. And so generally, I think we had 800 individuals on the interest list, we had around 200 apply. Remember, the housing cost in Phase 1 is 350 to 475? Is that the right number? You know, preliminary, I think what I'm hearing for these folks is what, about 50% are getting through or a little bit over 50%? So when you think about that, and you think about the price of the homes, and you think about the number of folks coming into it, and those that are getting through the qualifying process from the lending institutions, which is a different piece, what that's starting to do is to give some clear line of sight on, on the fact, even when you're seeing homes at this price, which is unusual, you're still not seeing people meet the qualifications
Right.
in this, which when you talk about this other side of the equation, that, that's a piece of it. But I say that because I'm talking at 35,000 feet in terms of the dataset, but as we continue going through the process, we're gonna bring actual data in terms of who's coming into the, who's coming in, who's qualifying, how many are sitting in these various locations. And I think that's gonna give us something more actionable than we've probably ever had when we're looking at this, this conversation.
Thank you for that, Harold, because that's always been something that the public forgets when they come in and talk to about affordability of for-sale homes and they want for sale, that city council, number one, doesn't set the market price unless we do it ourselves, build it. And they have to qualify for the loan through the bank. And if they can't qualify, it doesn't matter how many, like you said, there is only a percentage of all those that applied that could even qualify to get in to those, to those homes. And so it's sometimes difficult, sitting here, having people come up and say, the city needs to do this, this, and this, and I think, but that still won't necessarily mean that people will be able to get into that unit. So, thank you for that. Now we are on the funding side of this.
All right, thank you for your patience with our two-part housing item tonight. So now I'm gonna transition us really from that 30,000-foot view of our five-year HUD plan and talk about our budget and our funding recommendations for 2025 for this year. So every year, we do an annual competitive cycle for our CDBG and our local funds. The timing of the cycle is really driven by CDBG and our HUD deadlines, but we pay our local funds at the same time, just to make it one seamless process. So we open our application period in general in April. There's lots of ways we try to reach out and get projects in the door. And then we usually come present funding recommendations after staff has had a chance to evaluate those at the Longmont Housing and Human Services Advisory Board meeting in May. And I always want to extend a sincere thank you to HHSAB members for listening to applicant presentations during that meeting, looking at the meeting materials, and just in general, giving staff really good feedback and questions. And then ultimately, HHSAB makes recommendations that we then bring to you all for final funding decisions. So as I mentioned, we really time our local funding with our CDBG deadlines, and our CDBG and home program year is the calendar year, so we're always about six months behind when we actually bring funding recommendations to when the program year started. And that's the same for a lot of entitlement communities and for all the other communities in the home consortium. And then following the public hearings tonight, we will submit our action plan, as well as the consolidated plan, to HUD for formal acceptance. There's also a 30-day public comment period for our action plan, which is again those 2025 funding recommendations. And just a note quickly for the Boulder County Affordable Attainable Housing Tax, also known as Boulder County Proposition 1B Funding, we did not include any of those funds in this competitive cycle. We're kind of tracking that separately with Boulder County, and a separate IGA will come to you all, that is being drafted by Boulder County Legal right now. All right, so just an overview for our CDBG. Again, Longmont is an entitlement community, so we get CDBG based on population size and things like poverty rate directly to Longmont every year. Our allocation for 2025 increased slightly from last year, which is good, but it does trend downward over time. You can see a graph from the last 20 years of how CDBG has ebbed and flowed, and it's really dependent on Congress, you know, setting HUD's budget, and that flows through the appropriation every year. So this year, we have 488,849 for our 2025 entitlements. We have carryforward from, kind of money we're holding for projects from previous years, we also have estimated program income when folks pay off loans. And so our total CDBG budget, as you can see in your council communication, was $1,035,196 and change. And we'll talk about how we're gonna spend that, as well as our affordable housing funds. So for CDBG, as Lucy mentioned earlier, we are allowed to take 20% of our allocation for administrative costs, and that really funds staff. So we generally need that full 20%, and that amount really doesn't fund the main position that oversees our federal funding, so that's supplemented by our local Affordable Housing Fund. And then I do want to mention, there's more detailed information in your council packet, but we had one competitive CDBG application from a for-profit company that specializes in technical assistance and business support for childcare providers. Staff, as well as HHSAB, did not recommend funding for this project. Really, the core of the concern was concern from human services staff that this company services really duplicates a lot of local efforts in the human services and childcare space. But we're continuing to talk with this organization, and they were recently awarded a pilot project in Greeley, so we're planning on following to see how that works closely, and whether it could be a good fit for Longmont in a future year. But at this time, we're not recommending funding. So what does that mean for CDBG? That means taking out our admin, taking out our carryforward, which again is money we're holding for projects that were previously approved by you all. We're proposing to put the remainder of those funds into our owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program. This is really our preeminent CDBG program. It is a very high need in the community, and we're excited to be able to really put a lot of our CDBG money through our rehab program. And this is exactly targeting that goal that Councilmember Chris was talking about earlier, which is helping owner-occupied, low-income folks stay in their home, pay for things like roof repair, HVAC repair, water heater breaks, that they likely wouldn't otherwise be able to pay for. So that is our main kind of use of CDBG funding that we're proposing for 2025. Christie, I'm gonna jump in and add a note. Mayor and members of council, Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director, I wanted to just highlight here that the CDBG funding, there's a lot of talk out there about what's gonna happen with CDBG at the federal level. As you can see, our funding stayed somewhat level and actually a slight increase for 2025. We do expect a decrease in 2026. And one reason why putting our money into the rehab program is potentially a smart thing to do in the light of the uncertainty at the federal level, is that can carry us forward through 2026 and kind of ride the wave, and that can help us keep serving people with the funding going forward, just in case funding in the future gets cut. We didn't want to dedicate funding towards projects, and then when future cuts come, be in a sticky spot. So we've definitely had planning for future cushion in mind in these funding decisions for CDBG.
Thank you, Molly, that's good context. And just a note on the Attainable Housing Fund, which is a separate local funding source, all of our attainable housing funds are currently obligated for the True North Attainable and Affordable Homeownership Project through 2027, unless we receive additional grant funding, like we did just a couple months ago from the state. Any money that we can get from the state offsets our local commitment, and so that will free up money for more middle-income attainable projects sooner than 2027, if we are successful getting more money from the state. But right now, that is being held for our obligations that are outlined in the developer agreement. Okay, so let's talk about the Affordable Housing Fund, which is our main local source of funding for affordable housing here in Longmont. So we can see a summary of our overall budget for 2025. Again, this includes a lot of carryforward amounts, and this is pretty standard for the Affordable Housing Fund, because of the nature of development projects from a year that we hear a presentation, you all approve an award, it's quite common for that project to not actually achieve financial closing until the next year, or sometimes two, three years later. So we're always tracking a lot in carryforward amounts as projects meet their appropriate timing for when they actually need to receive the funds. And then we have the general fund transfer that council graciously gives the Affordable Housing Fund, we have some revenue from the marijuana sales tax. And then we have, we actually received more in fee and lieu than we projected in 2024, which is great. And then for 2025, we're estimating $1.5 million in fee and lieu revenue, and we'll kind of be tracking that throughout the year. And we always present those true-ups to you in March when we do our CAPER, which is our annual report for HUD. And then estimated program income, similarly, when previous awards in the form of grants are paid back, it all goes back into the pot as a revolving loan fund. And then, as I mentioned on the previous slide with True North, we were successful in getting state Proposition 123 money for True North, and any money we can get from the state just helps offset that local commitment, so we can use those dollars for other projects. So going through our, what we call non-competitive proposed expenditures, this is really a mix of, again, holdover projects, as well as admin costs of the HCI team money we are promising to certain projects, so we're making sure that we're never awarding out any dollar that we don't have. We're citing aside money for our, things like our annual data dashboard that we present to you in March, that goes into our online calculator on the website. We have a planning consulting contract through Tetra Tech. This is a really important service for affordable housing developers, like Habitat for Humanity, for example, and that provides them subsidized essentially engineering and planning services to help those projects get through the entitlements process very efficiently. And it's also helping us meet our state Prop 123 goals for the, to stay in compliance with that. And then we're also proposing to hold some money back for estimated fee offsets for eligible affordable housing development projects, as well as some pre-development costs for city/LHA projects that are kind of in early pre-development funding, or stage, excuse me. And then I do want to mention, as of right now, I know on the consent agenda, we had the Proposition 123 Down Payment Assistance Grant Agreement from DOLA, that was $750,000. We are proposing right now to add another $250,000 for 2025. So that would bring the total pot for local DPA to $1,250,000 if the second tranche of 250 local money is approved. And so that's something for council to consider tonight, and that would, because we have the 250 from 2024, the state money, and then we are, staff is proposing another 250 for 2025. And then we would pause and spend down, and then reevaluate in a couple years, but we really want to get ourselves in a position such that we can serve all of the True North buyers, as well as other income-qualified folks that are purchasing market-rate homes and other, like land trust homes, other homes in the community, and make sure we have a healthy local down payment assistance pot. So I just wanted to call that out. Okay, so on to our competitive awards. These are projects that formally applied and staff evaluated and HHSAB recommended. So starting with Boulder County Housing Counseling, this is a longstanding program that is very highly rated and appreciated by our residents. This is providing pre-purchase counseling, for example, for all True North buyers and all down payment assistance applicants. We consistently get really good feedback about this program. In 2024, the program served almost 200 Longmont residents and over 240 sessions, which means that folks are going back more than once, which is a good sign, it means they're getting value out of those free housing counseling sessions. So Boulder County did request a two-year award, so if approved, they would get award for '25 through '26, so they would not have to apply next year. And really, this is just to provide continuity through this increase in service that they've seen from True North buyers, to really take us all the way through Phase 1 into '26, and just make sure that we have that resource for housing counseling. Next is Brothers Redevelopment Paint-a-Thon. So Paint-a-Thon is a program where Brothers Redevelopment pairs volunteers with generally low-income and older adult homeowners to do exterior home painting and minor repairs to homes and their front yards. And this program was actually active in Longmont in the past, which is exciting, and it would be great to revive it, especially since we have a good chunk of money for our homeowner rehabilitation program, pairing it with Paint-a-Thon. So brothers applied to a relatively small grant to be able to host Paint-a-Thon for 2026, and there would be able to do six projects with that. So next competitive award is Habitat's 15th and Terry, also known as Faith Point Project. So this is proposing to build 35 for-sale Habitat homes, so duplexes plus one single-family home with a built-in in-home childcare facility. And Habitat's been working on this project for multiple years, and they received an Affordable Housing Fund award last year. They're coming back in for a larger award, and really, this is just based on financing costs, increasing gaps. And I think this speaks to a larger trend of, because development projects are taking three, four, or five years from even starting entitlements to actually completion and construction, that they're seeing those gaps increase, and it's quite common for us to see projects that we have invested in coming back in maybe two years in a row. So I will note that this project is on our list of units that we're tracking for Proposition 123 for homeownership units. And so we're recommending the additional award. And then transitioning to another development project, that's a preservation project, so the Cannery, which is just a few blocks away. So the Cannery, in the past several months, reached its 15-year li-tech compliance period, which is a complicated legal concept, but basically, it's in a process right now where it's being sold from its tax credit investor, which is PNC, on the open market, and Thistle Community Housing, which is a local nonprofit, and they have been managing the Cannery for the past 15 years. They're trying to buy it outright, and we are proposing to support them in doing that. And really, this is an example of the ability for the city to invest in a project to ensure it stays in local ownership and a compliant nonprofit partner. There's a lot of varying levels of deed restrictions and different compliance agreements related to this property, and I think staff in HHSAB recognizes the importance of supporting this project to stay in local ownership versus, since it is being listed on the open market, it could go to like a private equity national apartment conglomerate. So we are proposing to assist with Thistle's acquisition, so they can own it outright. So we are proposing to assist with Thistle's acquisitions so they can own it outright. And this project did receive an award last year as well, a little bit different flavor. So we are, do you want to help me with this?
Sure.
We have three loans going on with the cannery.
Yes. So it was awarded an Affordable Housing Fund loan back in 2007 to support the original tax credit project there. They also, last year, were awarded $400,000 to attempt to purchase the property next door to expand and build more units. Now, the timing, because they have to act quickly with the tax credit investor so that they don't move on to the next offer, the timing is coming where they would need the acquisition money for the cannery before the acquisition money for next door. So what we propose to do is take the $400,000 that was approved last year, wrap that into the cannery acquisition. They'll front fund the 200 and reimburse that later, but we couldn't, because they want to close by June 30th, which is here in about a week and a half, we need to make sure that your decisions tonight make it through the budget appropriation process so we wouldn't be able to actually cut a check per se until the end of July. So we're just proposing your approval to kind of swap that funding, the both purposes would still be served just in a swapped order. Also, for the 2007 loan, we would wrap that balance, that's a capitalized balance there of interest over time, and wrap that into the new loan. So it's just one package that would keep the 174 in the project rather than asking for them to pay that at closing, which they don't have 174 ready for that, that's why they're asking for the 600. So that is something that we commonly do with the affordable housing loan as long as it is still serving the intended need. So that's something that we would want your approval on with this.
Thank you. I was working on the loan docs today, but that was much more eloquently explained. So that's our summary of essentially our project budget for 2025. Happy to take any questions, and then we will need a public hearing specific for the 2025 action plan.
So I just want to say that as far as the cannery goes, that's a pretty inexpensive investment into building that size with that many tenants. How many units are in the cannery, do you know?
There are 94 units. And I also want to note, I think I put this in the council packet, but it is locally designated as historic, and so that's another consideration of, again, supporting a local nonprofit that will, in making any building modifications or any rehabilitation of the building in the future, really respect that local designation. We know, you know, we can call Thistle, they'll pick up the phone, and that is the main concern is just if it were to go on the private market to a national holding company.
Great, thank you, Counselor Crist.
Thank you, Mayor. Christie, you and I emailed back and forth, but tell me the new $250,000 you would like to use for down payment. Is that coming from the LHA or the fee and lieu?
So, yes. So in 2024, council approved an initial seed fund of $250,000 for a local down payment assistance program. We then applied late last year for the state Prop 123 award, which we were granted in March. And so currently, you approve the consent agenda, so you approve the DOLA grant agreement. So as of now, we have a million-dollar starting pot that we can launch for local down payment assistance. We are proposing to add from the 2025 Affordable Housing Fund allocation, another $250,000 to make a starting pot of 1.25 million, and then kind of hold that spend down over the next year into really supporting the first two phases of True North to see where we're at with spending rates before we go back to DOLA and would go back to you to ask for another allocation. So in total, it would be $500,000 of Affordable Housing Fund and a million of Prop 123.
So just to confirm, the Affordable Housing Fund sources come from a combination of general fund transfer and fee and lieu revenues and program income and marijuana tax revenues. So that's the background of where the money comes in to the Affordable Housing Fund and then would go out in this fashion.
Yeah, yeah. And so that extra $250,000 will count as matching for another application of DOLA funds?
Yeah, so the way that our contract is set up with DOLA is we have to, well, we send the monthly reports checking in on the drawdown, but we have to show that we're spending down that at a sufficient rate, and then that additional 250, hopefully, we can spend there $750,000 very quickly and serve all the True North buyers. But yes, that would be, here's our next tranche of local match, we're coming to ask for more money from you for phases two, three, and four. That would be the goal. So that would kind of be pre-setting our local match for the next grant application to the state.
Okay, and that seems reasonable. Thank you.
I want to kind of tag on to what they said, that I think when we go and we go for state funding, I think the council's commitment and the money that you all have invested in the projects you've tackled, actually, I think when we're competing, says a lot, and I think what not, I'm pretty sure that's why we've been successful, because we're not coming to them saying, we need this money and we're not putting anything into it. There's a demonstrated track record from the council in approving these projects where I think really adds leverage to our request as we're coming in looking for state funds.
Yep. I would just add, we're always doing the math on leveraging on our funds, and from DOLA's perspective, they're doing the math on leveraging of their funds, so that's why the local match is important for both parties.
Can I have a clarification of the payment assistant? Did I hear you say that not only for the Affordable Housing Payment Assistant Plan, that down payment assistance, that it was also, could be used for market value?
Yeah, so down payment assistance works on an income qualification basis. We don't actually have a, outside of True North, which has its home prices set, as long as folks are income qualified, they can take DPA and go out if they can find a market rate house that they can afford. We're not seeing a lot of that, which speaks to the reason why we need True North, excuse me. And Katie Silva's behind me, our homeownership program specialist, administers the down payment assistance program, and she had four closings last year, and I believe all of them were also for land trust homes or other like subsidized homes. Three of the four were for homes and other affordable programs through Elevations, Community Land Trust or similar. So theoretically, yes, as long as your income qualified folks can take our down payment assistance and go out and try to find something on the market, but we just don't see it because they're not able to find something on the market that they can qualify for that mortgage even with our down payment assistance. So we do anticipate the vast majority of folks using this money for down payment will be True North buyers over the next year.
Okay, great. Counselor Popkin.
Yeah, thanks, just two clarifying questions. Harold, before, we were talking about the True North and the eligibility and qualifications and like who is qualifying, who wasn't, based on the real-time data. Just, I think I know the answer to this, but I didn't want to make an assumption here. Are the people who aren't qualifying failing, are they struggling to meet the minimum requirements? Or are they like overqualified for what the constraints are, like the constraints to be eligible for this are?
We have some under and some over. There's also debt to income requirements to make sure that the mortgage would get approved. And so they're sorting through that list right now with all their applications to determine those that are clearly not going to be able to qualify through the program, and then work with those that could be borderline, and let's dig deeper and make sure we're looking at it close.
Great. And in the context of talking about True North and the down payment assistance and the CDBG funding and the home funding, the True North project was particularly made possible, and again, I wasn't part of it when we were, when this was all being kind of first hashed out. That was part, let's say, largely made possible because of a below-market land sale to the city, correct? So like even with all of these different assistance programs and the funds that were allocated for affordable housing, that was still a necessary ingredient to really make this impressive project pencil out, right, at the rates that we're looking at?
Yeah, I mean, this is public record. I think the first nine acres, correct me if I'm wrong, Molly, nine-ish, we paid $3.65 a square foot. The next seven and a half acres, we paid $10 a square foot. So, and then the first nine acres, 1.4 million, the second, seven and a half, 3.2 million.
Are both of those below market?
Oh, yeah.
Both the three and the 10?
The 10, yeah. So I think market depending on what infrastructure is available and whether or not water's there and other things are satisfied. So I'm giving you some round numbers, I was actually doing the math earlier. So let's say that's 4.69, and you look at 185 units, it's about, per house, about 25,000. If you looked at $18 a square foot, again, same square foot.
Which were the market rate?
Low end of market rate. I mean, it could be upwards of 20, around $23 a square foot. So at $18 a square foot, that's about $70,000 per house. And so, you know, I'm actually on a panel next week with Biz West. The most significant impact that you deal with in being able to provide this housing is actually the land cost. The land cost on the front end makes it very difficult, and that's how we're moving through this. We're starting to, on the attainable product, see that if you maybe are not able to manage that, if you can deal with fee waivers and some of the other issues that's in play. But in reality, when we look at the fee waivers, and I'll just tell you what we were looking at with True North, put it in perspective of land cost, the highest cost, again, roughly that we saw on large, single-family units on True North was $32,000 in fees. So when you start thinking about the land cost at a market rate land cost related to the fee structure, that's a big driver in this. And I can clearly say, without getting the land at that cost, there's no way that True North would ever have come to fruition.
Yeah, well, thank you, and I'm sorry to make you do math on the fly there.
Yeah.
That doesn't, the $32,000 in fees doesn't sound like 20% of the project, which was a number that was tossed out earlier during public comments. Is there any reason, like, am I, like, if you're, if the city is trying to manage costs as much as possible here, and it sounds like we are?
Yeah, I mean, that includes pretty much all of it, and that also includes the school district fee as part of that number.
That's already included.
That's included in that, and I don't think that was waived on True North. And so that's in there, but we're just looking at the fee calculator in terms of what we have, which is based on square footage and some other issues.
Sure. And of course, we're not trying to throw the schools under the bus here either.
No, I just think it's, you know, that's part of what we're trying to work through when we try to drive this on this, is to understand what are the nuances and what are the triggers that we can pull.
Cool. Thank you for those clarifications.
Okay, so I don't see any other questions in the queue. I would like to open this up to public comment at this point. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to comment on the funding plan that has been presented to us by LHA? No, this isn't LHA.
It's the city.
The city.
The city.
I see the same group of people, so I automatically think LHA. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on this item and actually make the motion that we adopt the recommendations for Longmont's 2025 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan, Affordable Housing Funding, and Attainable Housing Fund allocations.
Second.
That's been seconded by Counselor Crist. Let's vote. Come on. Mine's a yes. Oh, it did. Look at yours, Kria. So that passes unanimously. Sorry, my computer did not come up.
Thank you for your time, and I want to, again, thank Root Policy Research for their help preparing the consolidated plan, and also want to thank HHSAB again for helping us with our funding recommendations.
And thank all of you for a great presentation. We're going to take, well, we have another one here. Let's finish this and then take a break. The next one on our list is a bill, 2025-38. It's for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025. Do we have a presentation on this? Okay, we do not.
Oh, we do.
It is the appropriations, additional appropriations. Okay. So are there any questions on this bill from counselors? Seeing none, I'll open up the public hearing on 2025-38. Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to address this bill? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on 2025-38 and ask for a vote. 38. Okay, it's been moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by Counselor Crist. Let's vote. Let's do a hand vote. All those in favor of 2025-38, just raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Yes, we need to reboot, so we're going to take a break. Five minutes. Thanks, Alaska. It's this one. There it is. Okay, we have one more on second reading. It is a bill twenty five, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine for an ordinance amending Title X of the Longmont Municipal Code by adding Section ten point two, twenty-four point one thirty concerning sitting or lying down in commercial districts. And we have, uh, Chief Artis.
Mayor, give me one second, please.
Sure. For me to drink some of this wine.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. So, I'm ready whenever you guys are. Thank you for allowing me to get the PowerPoint up for you this morning. Uh, Mayor, Members of Council, Zach Artis, Public Safety Chief for the City of Longmont. I'm joined tonight, um, by interim Police Chief Dave Moore and the Master of Police Officer Sarah Arnie tonight to be able to answer any questions that she might have. Tonight, before you, is for council's consideration tonight, is a proposed ordinance that would restrict the use of right-of-way in certain designated commercial districts. The intent of this ordinance is to address concerns raised by our business community by keeping public right-of-ways clear, promoting safer pedestrian access, supporting local commerce, and fostering a welcoming environment for both community members and visitors alike. The ordinance seeks to balance the needs of the community and local businesses by providing clear enforcement guidelines and allowing for reasonable expectations to ensure fairness across the board. The slide before you depicts the areas that the ordinance would affect. As you can see, it's not all the streets of the City of Longmont. These streets and areas were identified by our Neighborhood Impact Team within Public Safety based on the number of complaints from the public businesses and calls for service that we received. As you can see, we've identified, um, several corridors within the city, uh, Seventeenth Avenue, Twenty-first Avenue Commercial District, the Downtown Commercial District, Hoover Street Commercial District, Kim Pratt Boulevard Commercial District, Main Street Commercial District, Southwest Commercial District, and U T E Highway Commercial District. The next two slides that I'll show you are just basically a closer view of when we talk about two specific districts, which is the Main Street Commercial Area and Hoover. As you can see, we're only talking about the items that are outlined in red. None of the streets that are not in red would this ordinance apply to. And this is, of course, the Hoover Commercial Area. So a little bit about the ordinance and what is being, uh, brought to council for guidance this evening on the second reading, is the ordinance would only apply to the hours of seven AM and ten PM, Monday through Sunday. There are extended hours on Friday and Saturday that extend from ten PM to three AM. Uh, in order for enforcement to happen, uh, officers must go out, meet with the individual, advise them of what it is, how they're violating the ordinance, and then basically ask them to, to move on. Um, again, only in the red areas that were highlighted, uh, on the maps. The ordinance does not prevent anyone from exercising their First Amendment rights, soliciting or protesting. There are exceptions that are built into the ordinance. Those exceptions include medical emergencies, um, use of mobility devices due to medical, um, disabilities, operating or patronizing a commercial establishment with the, with the city issued permit, attending permanent or events like parades, festivals, and demonstrations, using city furnished seating, and waiting for public transportation at transit stops. So the question is why? Well, if you're already familiar, the city requires that right-of-ways are maintained by businesses. We already dictate the type of green re, green space they have to have, design standards. We also dictate, um, what their signage can look like in those areas, and we have a lot of control. Um, and so what we have found, and what we continue to get calls on, is individuals sitting in line in the right-of-ways, they generate many calls for service. Uh, one is businesses are responsible for maintaining those right-of-ways and landscaping. They find that the things get broken, their sprinkler systems damaged to the grass, the businesses then have to go back and pay for those. Um, and so again, we find that preventing individuals from sitting or lying in those areas, uh, keeps it accessible, um, and it includes, uh, including patrons and individuals with disability. So it keeps, uh, right-of-ways, the intent of the right-of-ways is to create a buffer between the road and the business. We have parks and open spaces for leisurely activity, and so the purpose of this is based on communications with the business owners, the challenges that they've had, uh, the fact that we do not have the ability to ask individual or make people move from these areas. Uh, and so tonight, we're proposing to you an ordinance, uh, that would allow law enforcement to go out and be able to ask people to move on in these particular areas that we continue to get high levels of calls for service and complaints. Uh, and so that is just a brief overview of what the ordinance is, but I am happy, along with my staff, to answer any questions that you might have.
Artis, um, do councilors have any questions or, uh, comments? Mayor Protiem, Madago, Ferri.
Um, thank you. So, um, this is something that I've kind of, you've heard me, I go back and forth, um, and, and these are also concerns that I've heard from constituents as well, is the idea of, okay, we've moved people out of these spaces, then they, they go and reside, or they go stand or sit in other spaces. Um, some people have mentioned residential, others, you know, that it would just move, you know, you're just pushing it aside. Um, but what are we doing? How can we work to address the issue? So what would be the benefit, I guess, to somebody? And I also, we've been in conversations with this before, it's not just impacting the unhoused. Teenagers, gang activity, people, you know, selling and using drugs that are housed. So there's other activities that are happening by different types of individuals. But my concern is, around the unhoused, is if we're moving them, what, what opportunities do we have to have a contact and, and direct people to services? How would this, how would this support unhoused folks?
So, I, I do want to be perfectly clear that this ordinance affects everyone. It affects the mom and the kids that decide to sit under the tree at McDonald's. Uh, it does affect those, um, individuals that potentially are unhoused. So we do have services within the city, and there, and there are partners that are nonprofits that do go out and engage the unhoused community specifically to try to identify resources and needs that they have, to then try to get them into those services along with them to sustainable housing. Um, and so again, there are services that are out there, and there is a lot of work that's being done both internally with Public Safety. At one time, we had two case managers that worked specifically with the unhoused. Uh, I believe that, uh, Hope is here, and Hope is also, can speak to this, the work that they do with the unhoused as far as with the shelter work and Housing First model. So there is a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes.
Yeah.
This, um, issue was brought to us, as I've had multiple meetings with, particularly, we'll just take an example, the northern business districts, and their concern is like, how do we, how can we partner and find a common ground and a way to help them with their businesses and the complaints that they get, not only from their customers, but also from, um, themselves as business owners, that they're responsible for maintaining these areas, the distraction it takes from the business. And so that is the piece that we have no enforcement mechanism at this time.
Okay.
So if I can jump into with, with Zach, we've both been at the meetings with, you know, different business groups. There's a couple of other things, and there's, there's a couple of other things that have come into play. Obviously, when businesses are permitted, they have, um, landscaping plans that they have to, um, adhere to. Uh, we've had challenges with businesses not going through the process and adjusting landscaping plans. One of the challenges, um, that we heard is in their landscaping plans and what they can do. So Zach referred to the fact that in that plan, they are, they have to maintain that area of space. They can't use that area of space. And so one of the challenges that it was brought to our attention is, well, why can't I put picnic tables to do? Our code actually prohibits that, in, in that they, they cannot utilize that for their business. And, and so that was another thing that came in those, in the conversations with them is, well, if I can't do this, why can someone else be here? Um, so there's, there's nuances to these conversations.
Mm-hmm. And yeah, and I had been, I mean, my entire time on council is working with North Main businesses. That was the inception of, you know, through conversations, the Neighborhood Impact Teams, determining that, um, the neighborhood, you know, looking at cleanup. So there's, there's, there are things that, you know, we on council are eyeing, we've seen that, we've seen what the, the issues are, and it's how are we going to kind of work together with our, our nonprofits, with other organizations that help support? Um, my hope in, you know, if this comes to, to be, does it then allow, so when Public Safety does approach an individual who maybe is in need of support, will that, will we, as an organization, support that individual to get them into the services that they would need? Do we have, you know, so my, my hope is that we can create those points of contact.
So I, I would say we already have those points of contact. Um, we did a survey, uh, I think, uh, last year, where we went out and surveyed and made contact to identify what services they need, what resources they need, uh, internally, and I think we shared that with some of the other departments within the city, uh, particularly Christina Pacheco, El Alberto, some of what we were finding as far as the needs, why they weren't using certain services within the city. Uh, so there is some collaboration behind there. There becomes a point in time, I think, that when we get the phone call, and to Harold's point, uh, there's nothing that we can do. Um, and so I'm looking at business owners going, there's nothing we can do for you. Yes, you have to follow all these rules, but this can take place, and there's nothing we can do. We're just asking for a tool or a resource to be able to find that balance. Um, again, I, I think the expectation is, we're not going out to write a bunch of tickets. The goal is, we want to educate them. Same thing we have done with our parks, is that we want you to use our parks and our open spaces, but there are rules, like you can't use drugs in them. So there is this piece where we have worked with, with particularly, you're referring to the unhoused community, and asked those things. So we have a very robust process within Public Safety where we work both to, to push forward the housing and resources through lead programs and some of our outreach programs, but then we do have an enforcement piece that exists within Public Safety too, because as we all know, not everyone wants to comply. And so again, there are folks who are not eligible for services because they have been banned. Uh, we see that in, in housing also, once, if you're removed for housing for drug use, sometimes you're not eligible to go back into a housing program. And so again, there is this compassion approach, but there is, comes a point in time where there has to be an enforcement approach to get compliance. And so we're just asking for the tools and the resource to be able to use that when the approach of, how can we work together? How can you understand someone else's perspective to find this balance within the community? When that doesn't work, there's no other option for us at this time.
No, I appreciate that. It's, it's a tough decision.
And, and I think, you know, for council, we're trying to aggregate the amount of money that we're putting in, um, to all of these programs. Um, I think in staff alone, I mean, we're in excess of a million dollars. Um, I know I was meeting with the mayor in terms of what we're doing and, um, what we're, what we're putting into the process. You know, Zach would never say this, but one of the things that he's done from Public Safety is just as we're talking about that, as we had an old, um...
Sweet old bomb trailer.
For, that, I guess it's air-conditioned, I mean, it's environmentally controlled that I think, um, he authorized to move in to, to really take a clinical aspect, um, so that the outreach teams can use that as they're engaging, um, with individuals. And, and so when we look holistically, it's part of what he has done with his, um, outreach team. It's, um, making adjustments with Alejandro and Danny in terms of surveys that we're doing, it's the work that El Alberto's doing, it's the work that Molly's doing in terms of permanent supportive housing, and the work that we're doing at the Suites and at Zenia.
Yeah.
Um, it's the clinicians that we're adding, so it's not that there's not other resources around. I think, um, practical application is, it becomes very difficult for us to deal with situations in these locations where property lines, right-of-way, and these other issues are there. And right now, what we're telling the business owners is, there's nothing we can do. Um, and I think that's creating this. It doesn't mean that we're going to sweep.
Yeah.
To be very clear. It means that we're going to try to utilize other resources, um, to get folks into the programs that we're working through. Again, I would say it's not unlike what we did with the standards of behavior at our parks. Everyone's welcome to use our parks.
Yeah.
Uh, there are requirements in terms of what occurs in our parks and, and how we operate, um, and, and again, that outreach that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. First off, thanks for the work that went into this, Chief Artis, and for sitting down with me and perhaps other council members too. Same with Eugene, I appreciate the time earlier today, actually, to clarify a couple of things. Um... Same with Eugene, I appreciate the time earlier today, actually, to clarify a couple of things. One of the things that City Attorney Eugene and I discussed was kind of the, the exceptions that Chief Artist walked through earlier. If you're interested in seeing those specifically, that's around page four of the ordinance. So I just did want, I did want to call attention to that, to let people know that this is not intended to, you know, penalize anyone for a medical emergency, or a medical disability, or attending a parade festival, or permitted rally or demonstration, or other special event, waiting for transit, as you said, and a few other things. So, you know, I think those are appropriately called out here as exceptions. Chief Artist, the one question I had for you, just building on Councilmember Hidalgo Ferrian's line of questioning, you know, there's, there's what tools you, you know, choose to use, and what tools you looked at to potentially use? So I'm just curious, when you were working with your team, to think about, hey, what's the right approach here, or what's the right tool to create? Were there any other things that you looked at? Why did this kind of stand out as being that mechanism that seemed to the most appropriate here?
So, Councilmember Popkin, when we looked at, as we had met with business owners on North Main, and we've heard complaints even from downtown to DDA, we began to look to a solution. So how, what is the solution? We began to look across the state of Colorado, to see what other cities may or may not have been doing, to see how did they model this? What were they doing? Did they have success at it? And so this model is basically pulled from Colorado Springs. It is something that they started with many, many years ago to address issues. They have expanded theirs based on whether that issue has grown. In certain areas, they've added streets or areas to their ordinance. But again, I would go back to and say that the goal is always to try to get compliance through education versus enforcement, because again, we recognize that there are challenges, and like, we've always talked about, not everybody needs to go to jail, right? Not everybody needs a ticket. But there is, there is a standard, this balance between community expectations, and we all have a certain standard and quality of life, or expectations that we expect from each other. And so we're trying to find a way to bridge this, this communication or this gap between the business owners and individuals that are using our right-aways with what they're not intended for. And so looking at what Colorado Springs did, and how they wrote their ordinance, the approach is, we're going to educate you first, and we're going to ask, if there's non-compliance, and you just refuse to follow the rules, then there are consequences. And I think you see that in our parks. We've worked with folks in our community, in our neighborhood, in a multitude of parks to address issues within our parks. We've asked, we've educated, we've explained the expectations of the community expectations. And so when you don't follow, those are our consequences. The only option we have is to issue a citation, or take someone to jail. And again, but there is a lot of work that is done to educate them, to help understand. The enforcement piece is really the last piece that we want to do. And so this is just a tool and a mechanism to allow us to help facilitate and try to create this balance between the two of what businesses expect and want in their community, and what our community wants. And so this is just a tool and a resource for us to use, and that's all we're asking for.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other counselor that wants to comment, I will open up the public hearing for this on 2025-39. Is there anybody in the chamber that would like to discuss this? I actually have a list of five or six people. The first one on this list is Petra Little. Littler.
Mayor Peck, Council. My name is Petra Littler. I use she/her pronouns. I live at 3531 Windmill Drive. I have the fortune to know a beautiful group of Longmont's community that seem to be the target of this ordinance, this concern for public health and safety of the residents of Longmont. I'm blessed to manage the Hope Navigation Shelter here in Longmont, which I believe puts me in a unique position to comment on how this could impact the folks that I work with. Ordinances such as the one proposed today seem unlikely to address the root causes of homelessness, instead harming our neighbors in a way that can easily be skirted around by people with even modest means. The language used to effect these municipal changes is skillfully written to address a perceived problem of homelessness without labeling it. It seems very clear when we speak of the public health and safety of the residents of Longmont, not only is it exclusionary of so many residents of Longmont, but it's designed to make those folks, or other folks feel safe at the expense of the least advantaged among us. According to the City Council Regular Session Packet, the city of Longmont has found Article 1024-130 to be necessary for the protection of health and safety of the public, a claim apparently unsubstantiated. I understand as lawmakers, it's your responsibility to your constituents to create and support laws which allow for the safety of the most people. It can become dangerous, though, to advocate for things that could make the community safer without providing any concrete evidence whether that's true. We talked about Colorado Springs, and the way that it's expanded to more than the initial place that it was designed to. Are we comfortable experimenting with the health and safety of some members of our community for no clear benefit to the rest of them? When an ordinance is passed, it ought to be made very clear that it would apply to all residents in the same way and to the same degree. Under defenses, the second permission to be exempt is having a medically confirmable disability. Who is confirming these and how? Perhaps someone isn't feeling well because of disabilities that aren't obvious, chronic illness, panic disorders? How do we consider those among us who don't have access to medical care and may not be able to prove a disability? I worry that this exemption would allow for discretionary enforcement. I worry this would create an ordinance minimally enforced except regarding our unhoused neighbors. Not to mention, we would expect our already overworked officers to consistently and fairly enforce this among their entire workload. In short, I simply don't believe that this change to the municipal code is being advocated for as a well-meaning attempt to make Longmont safer. Instead, I see it as a way to reduce Longmont's problem of homelessness by punishing those struggling without a safe home, reminding them that this city, like many others, simply is not meant for people that don't want to be seen.
Thank you. Ellis.
Mayor Peck and City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm the Executive Director of Hope Homeless Outreach, Alice Sultan-Fuss. I live at 1913 Tyler Avenue, and I am here because I didn't know about this ordinance. I truly did not know about it. That's the huge problem for me. I send my team, an outreach team, I send them to an outreach meeting every week, they have to go to this meeting. I want them to go to that meeting. I want to be a team player with the city. We collaborate with the city. The city does great things with us. We collaborate with the police. The police help us when we have to open both shelters. But this is the first time I really had this ordinance explained to me. The outreach team, I got on the outreach team meeting last week, like, maybe I'll learn something. There are two police officers that participate in this meeting, David and Sarah. There is Elie Berto, and there is a lot of nonprofits that are represented here tonight that would be amazing, amazing problem solvers for this issue if they had only been asked about it. So there's a disconnect that I don't understand, but I appreciate Zach's explanation. It's the first time I've really heard about it. I don't like it when Longmont gets compared to Boulder, and a lot of Longmonters don't like that either. So now we're getting compared to Colorado Springs, and we're using their protocols. They have 488,666 population, while we have 98,630. Their violent crimes for 2024 were 3,987. Longmont, 545. I, I get what is being said about this, but I don't think enough thought has been put into this. And I know that my staff is very upset because we just found out about it recently, and it feels put upon us to also be the enforcers of this, because that's what outreach does. So I, I would love for this to be tabled and be very inclusive of all groups that work on such problems. For an organization that does street outreach 20 hours a week, we have an outreach center that we're open daily, and we do sheltering. Our brochures are up here by dawn, if you want to see what we do and see our data. Housing was talked about at length, and so I won't even talk about that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ellis. Leah Hobart.
My name is Leah Hobart. I live at 211 Terry. I am not here tonight to speak on behalf of Hope. I am here to speak on behalf of the homeless population here in Longmont. This is, I want you all to hear this ordinance, how this ordinance will impact the only people who are in these public areas. This ordinance is one more step to separating poor individuals from the rest of the community. I know how this will affect them, because I was them. I was that person holding cardboard on the corner. I was the person in the grassy areas by the district. I was the person in the park. I was there because I had no other place to be. I didn't have a home. The many people in this community that showed me generosity and kindness are part of my success story. The people that saw me as a human, the people that would talk to me every day as if I wasn't homeless, they were the people that helped me not lose hope. I was lucky enough to get housed, to be able to get well, and wanted to give back to the community that helped me. That feeling is now gone for people. Pushing people into the outskirts of town doesn't solve the problem, it makes it worse. If people who live in public, they live in public, aren't allowed to be in public areas, where are they to be? They can't be in the parks. If they are there, they are told that they only can be there for two hours. We all know it's two hours under to the shelter, but that is not what they are told. They do not feel welcome in parks. That's why they're not in there. It's not because they found someplace to be, it's because they don't feel welcome. And this is just another thing, on top of all of it, to make them feel inhuman. And I've heard a lot about resources today, and being that I do work at Hope, I can tell you one thing about housing resources right now, they are nonexistent. I don't even want to get people engaged in housing, because there are, there's none. And so at a time when there's none, how are we going to go around and tell people that they aren't allowed to be in public areas? This is cruel. Please, please, table this. Please, be that community that I wanted to give back to, and the community that helped me get out of the deepest hole I had ever been in. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Kristin Pistol.
Thank you, Council, and Mayor Peck. My name is Kristin Pistol, and I live at 2727 Nelson Road. I wanted to speak out against the proposed city ordinance because of my experiences living and working here in Colorado. So I moved here about five years ago because I saw the boundless opportunities that were available in community health and wellness in so many communities within Boulder County, and I was really excited by that. And I have had the opportunity to work with the homeless population, the unhoused population for the past five years now, and I've just, I've seen a couple of things. I do not think that this ordinance supports our community. I think it specifically targets and punishes an already marginalized community. I'm pleased to say that I've had the opportunity to help several people get housed, but one of the biggest barriers to that is when they have a lot of court cases and warrants to resolve, and a lot of those are not from things you might think, like, you know, drug charges, or assault, or violence menacing. A lot of them are stuff like trespassing, which has increased dramatically in the past few years since, I think it was two summers ago, the public behaviors of whatever it's called, ordinance was passed, and I just wanted to second what Leah said, that the unhoused community does not feel welcome in the parks. If they're not able to be in our public parks, that's why they move to the more commercial areas. That's why we've seen such an increase in those areas. That's why we frequent those areas much more often on outreach now, because nobody's in the parks, because they don't feel welcome there. So where are people welcome? If they're not welcome anywhere, they can't go to the parks, and they can't go, you know, even like frequent local businesses, where are they supposed to go? So I just think that passing this ordinance now, as it remains, will create more barriers to housing for the unhoused through racking up tickets that they could receive simply for existing. So Council, I urge you to remember that the unhoused people are people too. They're your constituents too. They are underrepresented, they are marginalized, they don't have the resources they need to survive, and they're just trying to get by. So I'd urge you to think again on this ordinance. That's it.
Thank you, Kristin. Scott Stewart.
Mayor Peckman, where's Council Scott for 229 Grant Street? After hearing some of the other speakers before me, I really feel that I stand in a place of privilege. I originally signed up for this prior to the presentation. If people are being asked to move on, you know, my note is, let's just make sure we're trying to connect them with services, so that there's a direction to a, to a better place. My original concern was, you know, by doing this in specific areas, are we really just pushing people into the neighborhoods and into the parks? I don't have an answer for this. I greatly appreciate what all of you have done by putting yourselves on the board, or putting yourselves up for a public service. This is extremely difficult. I truly appreciate the conversation that took place between Mayor Protem and the presenters for this. I think it was thoughtful and needed within this conversation, and I honestly don't see how you don't approve something like this in order to give the tools that might be necessary. And I think they spoke to the, to the point that this is not about trying to give someone this zouter, what have you, it's trying to, you know, continue on with the better, better environment for our whole society. Yeah, the whole thing's just difficult. Thank you.
We should finish.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tiger, I don't see you on here.
No, there's a Georgia.
Georgia Babatsikos.
Yeah, someone already signed up.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to miss you. No, you don't need to be on the list, Tiger, but you're, you're not next.
Hi there, my name's Georgia Babatsikos. I live at 1420 Renaissance Drive, Longmont. I work about a block...
You're good, keep going.
I work about a block from Main Street, and I go walk up and down every lunchtime. So under this ordinance, I would be arrested every day for sitting on benches, as with many people that are on Main Street. The way it's written currently, it could be anyone, but I'm afraid that it will be used discriminately against the unhoused. The wording includes "public right-of-way" on any bedding, chair, stool, or any other object placed upon the surface of the public right-of-way. Public rights-of-way are defined as any street, sidewalk, trail, path, alley, parkway, curb, median, traffic island, or any other publicly-owned property intended or used for pedestrian, recreational, or vehicular travel. So to me, that's pretty much everyone that I see on Main Street. This ordinance targets people who are strug- This ordinance targets people who are struggling and need to help, need help, and it attempts to push people further into the shadows where it's harder and harder for them to get the help that they need, treating them like lepers, stigmatizing and criminalizing them. Recently, I was in Australia and Canada and I was like, where are all the unhoused people? And the difference is different systems and different systems approaches. These countries provide infrastructure and services that keep people housed and fed and prevent homelessness. These are systems issues and we cannot just blame individuals for the hardships that they have endured. We need day shelters and long-term supportive housing in addition to emergency shelters, especially for people who have mental health and substance use, trauma, and devastating life experiences. We don't need criminalization. Everyone who is unhoused is someone's loved one. How would you like us to treat your loved one? If you give citations to the unhoused for doing the same exact things that I do, then that is discrimination and we don't want to invite legal action. If you truly apply this ordinance, you will be finding everyone. I urge you to reject this ordinance and develop a systems approach of getting people out of poverty and off of streets and let's learn from other countries. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Tiger, it's your turn.
Paul Tiger, 1935 Spruce.
1935 Spruce?
Yeah.
No, Tiger, give us your address.
This address. I'm not giving you my address. We've done this before. I'm not going to give my address.
Then don't give mine.
Okay, there you go. I want to support the police on this and I want to support the merchants of Longmont. So I was a merchant of Longmont for two decades and have had businesses on Main Street and on Nelson Road. And there has been an issue of, I would wonder if it wouldn't even cover dumpsters. So I have found people who are camped in my parking lot, in my dumpster, and on the sidewalk in front of my building. Recently, I drove down Main Street in the evening going to hear music at Bricks and there was a person who had taken not just a sleeping bag, they had a futon and blankets and so forth, and they were cuddled up against the building outside of the place that repairs cell phones. I think that it's, yes, the city does need to work on homelessness and, and help people who have issues with that. But Main Street in front of a business is not the location to camp. I understand that actually it's well-lit at nighttime and so it could be a safe place to be, but it isn't the place to be during business hours. So this is not, my understanding is just that this goes from seven in the morning until 10:00 at night. So if people wanted to camp out on Main Street, being that it's well-lit and a safe place to be, they could do that. But right now merchants have no, no say in the matter. And I have had people in front of my stereo shop at 635 Main Street telling me that I could go upper rope because they were within their legal right and they could not be removed by the police. So I don't really want them to be removed by the police. And by the way, we don't have an automatons for police force. It isn't just because it's written, this is the way it's going to be. Your opinion of how it's written isn't the way it's going to be. An officer has discretion. And I think that they'll move people and convince them that there's someplace else to be unless they're resistive and then handcuffs are involved. But I don't think that the ordinance not to be on the sidewalk is handcuffs.
Thank you, Tiger. Okay. So seeing no one else, seeing no one else, oh, you, okay.
Drew Soares, 328 Grant. I kind of like what Grant said about standards of behavior in the parks. And can the council consider standards of behavior in front of merchants?
Thank you.
It seems like that the issue is disrespect in front of merchants.
Paul Tiger's address is 42 Dixon Street?
52.
52. We'll go to 52. Since you announced mine?
I'm good.
You're good.
My name is Andrew Schwartz. I live at 1156 Summer Street. I'm happy to see all of you here. I have been an outreach worker here in Longmont for about nine years. I've known all these people. These are all really great people doing great things. And the biggest things we've accomplished have happened because, not because we've put new ordinances in place, but because we've worked together as a community. Harold, we worked together at the Collier Park, not Collier, Lanyon Park issue. One of the issues that came up was people didn't have IDs to get jobs. We started a program at Hope, which is hugely successful to get everybody an ID, a state ID, which is the first step to getting towards housing. That still exists. We've worked with public safety to get people into housing to not continually get arrested so we can't find them for housing meetings. There are so many, that this was drafted without consulting any of the organizations in this town that know this population, well, work with this population, understand this population, and can build trust with this population. It's just, it doesn't make sense to me. I think if we can't, if we can't reject this outright, put it on hold, we have an organization in this town that strictly works with restorative processes. I'm sure they would love to be part of conversations on better solutions than just taking people and moving them from one place to another because we know that that's exactly what this ordinance is going to do. It's going to take the people from these districts and move them to the districts that aren't redlined. It's what's happened when the ordinance happened, when the downtown ordinance, what was that, five years ago, that the streets and the alleyways in downtown were closed? And then they closed Roosevelt Park and Collier Park and put ordinances in place. So people moved further north up to Car Park, Lanyon Park, and now we're closing the streets up there. We're just shifting the population from one place to another and we're not solving any real problems. So please, if you're not going to reject this outright, please put it on hold and let's have some community, real community meetings to put in solutions that are going to be meaningful.
Thank you. Counsel Yarborough?
Are we sure? Well, are we sure?
I will close the public hearing on 2025-39 and call on Counsel Yarborough.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Of course, this is a very challenging conversation. But I have quite a few questions and I think if Sarah and Chief may want to be, Zach want to answer these, so I can just ask the questions and you two can determine or interim chief can determine if you want to respond. Listening to some of the, are the people in the audience here asking these questions, not asking, but talking about some of the issues, I want to know first of all if anyone, any staff member reached out to Hope or anyone that are, you know, helped that population or if they were asked to talk about the ordinance in advance? Do you want me to go question by question or you want me to just read all my questions?
I think if you go one by one, that way they don't get confused. So no, Hope was not approached. Neither was our center or anyone else approached regarding this because this ordinance applies to everyone within the city, not just the unhoused. And so again, I understand where Hope comes. Alice and I have a great relationship. We're just in disagreements in this ordinance. We've done a lot within public safety to work with them. She mentioned earlier with opening up the shelter, public safety will be the first one to open up the volunteer shelter, the second shelter for 24 to 48 hours when that's needed. Our officers go around and check on the unhoused during the time that there is inclement weather and transport exposure. Our core team with the paramedics go out and provide minor treatments to individuals. Our case managers share information with them. This ordinance wasn't addressed and created to address the unhoused issue. It's addressed the individuals who are in the right-of-way. We do not go through and when we engage someone and go, are you, do you have a house? Do you not have a house? And so we engage and this ordinance is to be applied across the board. I know there was some comments made, well, this will be unfair to the unhoused. Again, it's unfair to anyone who we ask to do something and they don't follow the rules. There is an enforcement action and piece to that. So no, I do know that Hope was made aware of this. I know there were several conversations with El Alberto and my staff, Sarah, once Hope did find out about it. So Hope was aware of it prior to the night. But no, we did not approach Hope or any other nonprofit to have a conversation because this is, this is a blanket ordinance that deals with everyone and anyone that uses those right-of-ways, right-of-ways.
Okay. Thank you. Now, someone mentioned about public safety or officers, you know, taking the time out to go out to address these issues. If a merchant or a business owner has an issue, you have to go out anyway. Am I correct?
So we do. We do get, we do get calls on issues within the right-of-ways in front of people's businesses. We've had those conversations. We've had meetings with Scott Cook in the chamber. We've had meetings with folks from, and I'm just using the North District, the North Commercial District. We've had conversations with them and their complaints are, what can you do to help us as business owners? How do we do this? You know? And so that is, is why we have brought back something that, again, if we wanted to create an ordinance, we could have asked council to make every street in the city red. We wanted to be very specific and target certain areas. So again, we're not pushing anyone out of the city. We're asking for the, when you're in these particular areas that we have high call volumes on, there is an expectation that the right-of-ways are used for what they are. They're not leisurely areas. Those are parks. Those are open spaces that we spent a lot of money as a city to invest in, that are unhoused or welcome to use. I know there was a comment made that they're told to leave after two hours. I'll be interested to talk to that individual when we get done and what officers are saying that because that has never been our approach. There is a pavilion two hour, but that is enacted by the Parks Department. And so again, we do have to communicate and provide services to the business owners. Many times we criminally trespass people from their property at their request. And so when you talk about that, they do call us for service and we have to try to render service and we can't, we explain to them why we can't provide whatever it is they think we should.
Okay. Sorry, I have several questions. So when you were talking about the individuals that may be pushed out, are the officers, when this, if this ordinance is passed, will the officers actually be pushing certain people to different areas? What can you go through that process of what that looks like if a merchant or a business owner calls the police because of someone is damaging their landscaping that they, they pay for in the upkeep of the landscaping and they've asked that individual to leave several times and the individual won't comply? And then they call you all and then an officer go to that place of business? And then can you just kind of walk us through that real quick as to what will happen when that officer arrives?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, let me just make it even simpler. If, if someone is in the right-of-way and this ordinance was to pass the way it's written, an officer would show up and meet with the individual and ask them that this is an area that's designated, explain to them how the new ordinance is applied, what areas it covers, particularly in that area that would apply to them, and then ask the individual to move on from that area. Now, where that individual decides to go or what he or she decides to do, we have no control over that. It is only the redlined area that we can have any enforcement action or ask people to leave. And so that is the only piece it is. So we would ask you to leave. If you didn't leave, then the only other option we potentially have, if you said, no, I'm not leaving, is to issue you a citation. And then again, then we would leave. Again, asking you to have already left, we've already issued the citation. If you chose not to show up for court, again, that's your decision. Like we can't control, once we do the enforcement piece and step away, the action the individual takes, whoever that may be, is on them.
Okay. Who all are impacted from this ordinance? Who would you say who all are impacted from this ordinance?
Well, I think it's the communities impacted. So people who want to use the green space, whoever those people may be. I think businesses are impacted. Some of them are impacted either, if the ordinance is not passed, then potentially we still get the same complaints and the same issues from the business owners. If the ordinance is passed, then business owners in those areas have the ability to ask folks to move on. So I mean, the impacts, who's impacted is kind of a complicated question depending on what council decides to do and chooses to do.
Okay. Last question for me. I see other co-counselors have their lights on. I know that we have programs and I know where the people who are, first of all, you've already mentioned this is not an, people who are unhoused problem. This is not a homeless problem. This is an issue in general for, for those who are violating the right-of-way, public right-of-way. I know that we have, as a city and city counselors, know that we have tried to support those who are particularly unhoused. I know we support organizations who are doing that, that work, who specializes in that. And I know for a fact that, that some officers go out and try to provide resources for those people who may be in need of resources, community resources. And sometimes those, those people don't want to receive those resources. And so what happens when, I don't know if people know that, that there are people who those resources are offered to them and then they don't want those resources. So I mean, is that, I just want to confirm that, that that actually happens.
So yes, there are, there are individuals, particularly from even the survey that we just did last year, through our staff and engaging the unhoused population. There are folks who said they won't use shelters because of X, Y, and Z. So again, they won't use resources because of X, Y, and Z. So there is data out there that does show that, yes, you can provide resources, but people won't use those. Again, I want to just reiterate that this isn't a new problem. This isn't just show up in the last six months. I've been here almost four years. This problem has existed for four years. So again, it is something that we have spent time on, talked to business folks. We didn't decide to do this last week and rush something through. Again, it's trying to look at how is our engagement working? What are the expectations? As you notice, it's, it's an ongoing work that both Hope and Alice and her staff and our staff does on a continuous basis within our parks, within certain areas to educate folks and provide services to people. So it's not like this is a new issue that we've had, that we didn't have unhoused problems six months ago, that we didn't have right-of-way issues six months ago, that we didn't have problems in our parks six months ago. But again, the piece in the parks is we educate. There are rules and expectations of how you will use our parks. And when you don't, we will issue a citation for you using drugs in the park. Again, and so there is this enforcement piece that unfortunately, the humanitarian approach of educating people and asking them for compliance doesn't work all the time. And you have to have an enforcement piece to do that. And so these are the areas that we get the most calls in. We didn't ask for the whole city. And these are the areas just trying to give the officers the tools and resources that they need. When they engage someone and someone doesn't want to comply with it, then we're asking them to move on. And if they don't move on, we have no other option at this time. This ordinance would allow the option for the officer to have discretion on whether or not to write a citation. But again, it's asking the individual to move. Is all we're asking for is the ability to ask someone to comply and move along.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience with all my 150,000 questions. And I know that this has been, businesses have contacted me throughout the years since I've been on council. So this has been an issue for mighty, for a long time. So I know for a fact for at least four years. So thank you for addressing it and thank you for answering those questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I don't have any questions. I'm just going to make a few statements regarding my potential vote on this ordinance. So you do not have to stand up there for my sake.
Sir, I'll sit down.
And thank you for your explanations as far as the consideration for this ordinance is concerned. I'm not going to speak about the myriad humanitarian points that were brought up this evening by various folks, which obviously very warranted and something very much to consider when we take our vote on this subject. My issue is My issue is more with the efficacy, adequacy, and consistency of enforcement. I feel that in the name of public safety slash quality of life, we've passed a number of ordinances over the last, in my tenure, a little over seven years now, that we put into place that are just simply not enforced. And I very much feel that this would generally fall into that category. Examples being, we have very prominent signage in many medians about panhandling. I still see people in those medians panhandling. We have prominent signage about people riding bicycles and skateboards and such in the downtown corridor. I still see people doing that all the time. We have very prominent signage about smoking within a certain feet of a front door of a business. I see that again, violated time and time again with limited enforcement. So I, I just, I don't believe that with the bandwidth and the serious nature of a lot of other items occupying our public safety's time, that this one's really going to spell the, the solution to any said problem. I also find it more likely that the most significant offenders close to our rights of way are likely violating already established ordinances such as littering, assault, public defecation, public urination, public drug use. These are all things that are already explicitly outlawed by ordinance or by law. And I feel that we're creating a nail for the hammer to hit. By doing that, we're then essentially unintended consequences, creating another nail that the hammer might have to hit if these people simply move to the non-red lined issue, areas of the city. And so I really don't feel that this is the answer, the solution to said problem. And so I just really, I can't vote for it, aside from the humanitarian issues, based on all those logistics issues, in my opinion. So I will not be voting for this ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Popkin?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Thank you, Councilmember Yarborough and Rodriguez for your comments as well and to the public who is out here tonight. Want to clarify a couple of quick things and then offer a motion. Yeah. So first of all, I think, you know, there was a comment about this is not a good way to solve homelessness. I think this is pretty obviously not a way to solve homelessness. This is not the intent. It's like using a hammer to wash dishes. I just don't think it's at all what we're, what this ordinance is trying to do. Someone asked a good question of who's confirming medical disabilities. I actually talked with our city attorney earlier today to clarify this specifically. Eugene, could you just share more about the affirmative defense language here and just the, how that's, how the ordinance is structured in that way?
Sure. Councilmember Popkin, Eugene May, city attorney. So the ordinance is structured by first creating the violation of sitting or kneeling in one of these commercial districts. It provides for a number of affirmative defenses. Under affirmative defenses, the burden is shifted to the defendant to bring proof that one of these affirmative defenses apply. If they do apply, proven sufficiently, then there is no violation. So it's not going to have to be the officer in the field. There will be a judge deciding based upon the evidence presented in the case and the affirmative defense, whether that is a proven valid affirmative defense or not.
Thank you, Eugene. Appreciate it. There was also a comment that was asking, is this penalizing folks for sitting on benches? And that is one of the exceptions that is explicitly listed on page four of the ordinance. I just want to let the public know that. You know, I actually do really understand the concerns that were raised here. You know, I, I actually, I agree with Chief Artist that this is not intended to target any specific population. But I do understand concerns that this may disproportionately impact certain members of the community and particularly unhoused members of the community. And I've heard willingness from folks to kind of co-create or come up with something that might be a better tool. And I'm willing to entertain that. So, so my motion is to table this until the second regular council member, council meeting in August. And I would highly encourage our public safety folks and members of the community who are interested in this to, to work together and see if there is a better tool. If there's a better tool or approach here that makes sense, let's do it. If there isn't, seems like this is our fallback position to address the problem that was raised.
And I'll second that motion. To ensure that there's a conversation between public safety and Hope, our, our main nonprofit that does work with unhoused, and see if there's an admin or an add, addendum that we can put. Why can't I say that word? Addendum. Here, you say it. It's after 10 o'clock. It's after 10 o'clock, that's why. Like, the words, it's in my head, but it's not coming out. So hopefully to add that piece, but. Three seconds.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Popkin to table ordinance 202539, or this bill. It's not an ordinance yet.
Can I ask a quick question?
Title 10, yes.
So if we get requests from business owners and others, do we include them in the conversation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, to be clear, my, my motion was meeting agnostic. I, I hope that this timing gives members of the community and organizations who work in businesses in the community, the opportunity to reach out or to engage and hopefully our, our staff will do the same. But it was, it was agnostic as to who we meet with and how we approach it.
And this was seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, Susie Hidalgo-Ferring. I do want to say something, though. I will, I will, I will vote to table it. But I think that our city, in many different areas, sometimes compassion might lead to enabling. And the only reason I'm saying this is that I had a brother that was homeless for years and we tried to find him. He eventually died on a beach in San Diego. And so my heart goes out to all the homeless people. But I do know that enabling him to be homeless was part of the problem. He wanted to be and he was unable to be. And that's, sounds like an uncompassionate, horrible thing. But it's like, it's like someone who has an alcoholic in the family and they kept buying him alcohol. You know, you just keep thinking, I don't know this is going to lead to the results we want. So homelessness is a huge area with many different layers to it. So I don't think that coming up and saying that, that we are pushing the homeless out is fair. It's also not fair to the businesses to say they have a right to be there because they don't have a home. It's, it's counterproductive on both ends. So Counselor Yarborough and I were talking earlier today about this bill, amending Title 10, because I've been working for almost nine years now on how do we transition the homelessness people into whatever works for them, but that is not counterproductive to the city. It's hard. It is not an easy thing. We're not being cruel. We are trying to make a city that works for everyone. And it's impossible. So I, I get very frustrated on both ends of this. But to say the city is trying to push homeless people out is an unfair statement and I do take it very personally. So we will continue to have these conversations. Shakita and I had some ideas we were going to bring to city manager, sorry, Harold.
Mayor Peck, just a quick clarification. My, my goal here is not to, I mean, the second meeting in August was an arbitrary timeline here. I wanted to keep this moving forward relatively reasonably, but also give a reasonable amount of time for some conversations to happen. Are there any concerns from staff on that timeframe?
I don't think there's concerns on the timeframe. I mean, it's really subject to when people can meet and we can get everyone together.
And, and this seems like a, you know, having two, what is that, two months, basically? More or less?
Month and a half or so. I mean, obviously, if we can move through it quicker, we'll bring it quicker.
Okay.
So, anyway, I don't see any other comments, but I had to make that because that comment, just because I get tired of the city being blamed for everything when you don't understand how, how very difficult it is and the different layers we have to work with. So in that, we will call for a vote.
So it didn't show up on your screen?
Of course not.
I was kicking it out already. Thank you for saying that. I appreciate that.
I didn't want to. That passes six to one with Diane Christ, Counselor Christ in opposition. We'll move on to the next thing, see if we can get out of here before we have to take a vote on 11 o'clock. We are now on items removed from the consent agenda and it was 9F removed by Counselor Popkin. Counselor Popkin, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Peck. This will be relatively quick. I just had a couple clarifying questions for our staff on this. And then I, I removed the heat action plan piece of this, just partly because we're about to enter the summer and actually this week, depending on the weather source you use, somewhere between, we were going to have at least two days that might hit a high of 99 to 103 degrees. So I hope you are ready for that. And part of the goal of this plan is to help all of Longmont get more ready for this more Becky, we exchanged a couple emails today just about what questions would make sense to discuss here today. So I appreciate that. You know, overall, the heat action plan is a fairly robust document that outlines a number of different strategies. So we're not going to talk through all of that right now. And for my fellow council members, I only have two or three questions here. This will be quick. What? This is item 9F, yes.
Oh, should we, we have to do, finish our 10? We have to finish our?
We, we did.
We did? Oh. Go ahead. I gotta wait.
That's okay. No problem. So I, I think, you know, we actually just had a conversation about at-risk populations in part, and, and maybe I'll just start with that question. You know, what is the city prioritizing in this, in the short term to support at-risk populations with extreme heat?
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Popkin, Becky Doyle, Chief Strategic Integration Officer. So within the document itself, actually, we had some of the higher risk neighborhoods serve as examples for how you would go about kind of engaging your neighborhood population to create a community-based action plan. We think it's really important to take an asset lens and, you know, use the solutions that people in those neighborhoods know about and are using. If you've had an opportunity recently to, to attend community events where the Sustainability Group has had their cooling tent, I believe that very low-tech solution of, of buckets with, with fans over the top of them actually came from one, one such community engagement effort. So, so that's, that's one approach, is to engage the communities and make sure that we're increasing their resilience using, you know, their, their own wisdom. And part of that also is, is increasing cert training, kind of using our, our public safety infrastructure to help make sure that people are, are prepared to respond to, to heat emergencies, just like any other emergency. So making sure that we have those neighbor-to-neighbor connections in place. We also, you know, are continuing a lot of the, the home-based visits and things so through our Seoul program and home rehab projects. I believe they're prioritizing those neighborhoods that are, that are most potentially heat affected and have solutions that, that are pertinent to cooling. We also received some grant funding that we have directed to the Longmont Community Foundation that will be used for window units for AC. So they're looking to roll that out hopefully shortly.
Is that window unit program, is that a rental program? Is it giveaway?
It's a giveaway. Yeah, it's a resource.
Window AC units, basically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other question I'll ask you tonight, I noticed that throughout the heat action plan, it seemed like, and I didn't read every word, but I read most of it, that mentions of efficiency works were absent from this.
Yeah.
When this is certainly a relevant program because it helps people insulate, cool, upgrade themselves, upgrade appliances, and it's something that the city invests in. So I was just wondering if you could share more context for that.
Yeah. So the heat action plan joins a pretty robust policy environment, you know, where we have a lot of plans and actions already in place. And I think in that kind of topic area of like weatherization and efficiency upgrades, kind of within that resilient and affordable energy action, it identifies 15 existing actions in other plans, in five other active plans. So it's, it's really, you know, we have, yeah, we have a lot of investments in, in energy efficiency. Efficiency Works is, is a very robust program that we partner with, but.
So it's, we have this, see here, see here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See reference A. Exactly.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure, thanks.
Seeing other comments from my council members, I'll move to approve the inclusion of the heat action plan into the climate action recommendations. That's item 9F.
It's been moved by Counselor McCoy to move, shoot, let me start that one over. It was moved by Counselor Popkin to move 9F from the consent agenda. And who seconded that?
I did.
And that was seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, Susie Hidalgo-Ferring. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. We're now at general business and it is the Quail Road annexation, annexation referral request for city council to refer the Quail Road annexation into the annexation review process. And we have Jennifer, excuse me, from the planning department to lead us in this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Peck and members of the council. Jennifer Hewitt Apperson, Principal Planner with the Planning and Development Services, here to discuss and bring back the Quail Road and 8902 Quail Road Annexation Referral. So just a quick overview, since this is probably still top of mind. This annexation referral is for the four properties generally referred to as 8902 Quail Road. This was the subject of a previous annexation referral motion by city council last March of 2024. An application for annexation was filed and ultimately withdrawn at the February 4th council meeting. This new referral request addresses concerns raised by city council and members of the community. As a reminder, this is not an application for the annexation, but rather a request to be referred to the full annexation application process. If this referral request is approved, there would be additional neighborhood meetings as well as public hearings as part of the full development review process. So just to recap, this site is eligible for annexation into the city of Longmont. It's within the Longmont Planning Area and part of a larger unincorporated Boulder County enclave. Our IGA with Boulder County does encourage annexation of such enclave areas. The site does meet the statutory 16th contiguity requirement for annexation established in Colorado revised statutes. And the proposed residential uses are consistent with the property's mixed neighborhood designation in envisioned Longmont. So what has changed? The applicant will discuss the changes to the proposed concept plan in more detail momentarily. The most significant change is the applicant has a formal commitment from, with Habitat for Humanity to construct for sale affordable housing on-site that would exceed the standard 12% affordable housing requirement established by our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. I will also note that it is pretty unusual to have such a commitment worked out so early in the development process. We typically don't see these types of agreements until we are well into site planning and final plating for projects. Council would review this agreement for, separate from the annexation review, through what is referred to as the what is referred to as the voluntary alternative agreement process for affordable, for inclusionary housing. So the applicant will discuss this in a bit more detail, but the concept plan in its current form is pretty similar to what was discussed in February. There would be a transition in maximum building height from two stories at the northern portion of the property closest to the Schlegel County subdivision, down to the southern part where the maximum proposed height would be three stories, which is consistent with the proposed residential mixed neighborhood zoning. I'll also note that that is the height, maximum height within our residential single-family zoning districts as well. Primary access would be from Clover Basin Drive with appropriate improvements built as defined in the annexation agreement and future public improvement agreements. I would also note that single-family homes to the east of the site would be buffered by detention and open space and other amenity spaces. Access to Quail Road, as previously committed, would be limited to emergency vehicles only. The maximum density and number of dwelling units does correspond to the density limits of the mixed neighborhood envisioned Longmont designation, though again, we would be reviewing that, you know, reviewing the full proposal as part of the full annexation review should the council decide to refer this application. So with that, I am going to turn it over to the applicant to talk a little bit more about the specifics of the project.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, thank you. Ryan McBreen, Norris Design, 244 North College Avenue, Fort Collins, Colorado. We're the planner and landscape architects assisting with entitlements on this application for Vista and Tyler, the applicant here this evening. So I'm going to keep our comments brief. I think we're very familiar with this project, but we wanted to hit on a few key points tonight. You know, as Jennifer mentioned, we are trying to be consistent with the Vision Longmont Plan, which is what we're following, which is what we've been doing all along or we attempted to do. And a few key points we're trying to do as part of this project, we're committing to further dedication of right-of-way along Clover Basin Rive, construction of aroundabout at Clover Basin and Larkspur, which will further help traffic issues that we know is a big issue, concern with the neighbors. Provision to provide a multimodal trail connecting through our private property from Larkspur, or excuse me, from Larkspur and Clover Basin north to Quail Road. Additionally, there's be no access along Quail Road, as previously discussed, except for EVA access. Permitting a maximum of only two stories on the northern boundary to further create a great transition between existing and proposed uses, as well as open space on the east side of the property, further creating a transition zone and buffering from this new and proposed uses. And I think the biggest change, as mentioned, as Jennifer alluded to, was the fact that we are committing to, as this early in the stage, is not only the 12%, but doing 15% affordable housing and providing it for sale on the site as part of the commitment moving this project forward. Just to touch upon a little bit here, there are a few images depicting the quality design and architecture that the applicant plans to bring to the community. There were concerns about what this is going to look like and why we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. We do want to create a high design and quality project full of durable materials that complement the existing and planned uses. We intend to meet with the community beyond the standard neighborhood meeting to discuss this and other particular items that they may be concerned about and that we heard about during this process before. As previously noted, a commitment to providing this 15% affordable housing on-site is proposed. The housing will be developed by Habitat for Humanity, and these images are current types of product that Habitat for Humanity is constructing and representative of what would likely be constructed on this site should this project be approved. I'm going to pass it to the applicant right now.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, thanks for having us again. We recognize that the last time we were in here, there wasn't a firm enough commitment to the affordable housing. So we spent the last couple of months working with the applicants who are here tonight, and David Emerson from Habitat, to bring that commitment up to 15%. So that would be 15% onsite affordable in partnership with Habitat. We executed a document that Habitat uses quite commonly. This is a memorandum of understanding. Our intention is to have you guys facilitate a voluntary affordable agreement to paper this further. For now, this is the best we can do. So the next issue we heard was on design. So as Ryan mentioned, we showed some precedent images. We fully intend to try to do our best to show you guys what this representation is going to look like. We understand the concept plan is lacking in details at this point, and that puts you guys in a difficult position. So we'd like to work with staff, with Public Works, and the neighborhood community to really further the design and show you guys some imagery before this is approved. Last, we'll do, as Ryan mentioned, the two neighborhood meetings. The city's meeting is online. I know that's not a great format for everybody, so we'd like to host two additional. We intend to have that as a, you know, a working meeting showing neighbors' design, for example, gabled roofs versus flat, you know? What's the preference there? Is there a leaning preference, something like that? So we'll facilitate those neighborhood meetings. So yeah, I appreciate your support on this project. You know, we're partnering with Habitat. This would be the largest Habitat project in Longmont, and we're excited to try to execute that with David. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm David Emerson. I'm the Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity in St. Rain Valley. Just wanted to be here tonight to answer any questions. A couple of things I would highlight, this MOU is something we successfully used with both Mountain Brook and Sugar Mill, so it's really materially the same type of concept. And a couple of things I did want to mention, one of the advantages of getting this far out is obviously planning. We are starting to see with Prop 123 funding ways in which we can go faster and techniques we can design for. So thinking about the lot sizes and working with Tyler and his team, we can be considering things like modular housing that look the same from the outside, but can be fabricated a lot quicker. Fading West has done that work with Vail Habitat for Humanity and so forth. So there are quite a few advantages to having an agreement in place this early. And I think those are the things I wanted to say, but I wanted to be here to answer any questions you may have, so.
Are there any questions from councilors for David? Councilor Christ.
Mr. Emerson, with your MOU at 15%, are you saying that you're planning to build 47 units?
So right now, that's what that would, that would be is 47, obviously subject to all that, where those final unit counts end up, so, yep.
Yeah, and what, what income level would those be geared towards?
So we are confined to lower than 80% AMI. As a Habitat affiliate, we can't go above 80%. So in general, when we're talking about those limitations, we're not magically getting, you know, 79.9 or 80%. We generally are getting about 10 to 15% below that. So while we have been, to this point, really targeting 60%, our average is 44. So that gives you an idea where we tend to end up. And obviously, maybe this is obvious, but just to be clear, one of the advantages here is that the developer is obviously doing all the site planning in concert with us. They're bringing in the infrastructure. So really, what we are concentrating on is making sure the architecture looks as good as it can look and focusing on being a builder rather than a land developer, which is a huge advantage.
Well, thank you for enacting this before annexation. It gives us something to work with. I do have, just in light of the, in light of the consolidated, consolidated plan that we just approved today, this evening, I'm just, I'm just going to mention some of the concerns that come out of this plan, and that is particularly with seniors and the aging demographic having more food access and other critical resources near developments. And a concern also from 25% of the survey respondents say they are very concerned about the rent increasing. So that's a concern if there's rental property. And then what demographic would the rent be focused or geared towards for the 310 units? Does it fill the gap that we have that is not people who are making $50,000 to $100,000 a year? And if, Tyler, if you'd like to respond to this, that's probably appropriate because I'm getting, getting to where there's a list now.
Yeah, I can't remember the figures on there, but the, generally, the rents are going to be between 75 and 100% AMI for Boulder County.
Okay. And I have the list here somewhere. Okay, 80% is about $84,000. This is just a rent that I was talking about that we, that we had presented to us June 25th. So, all right. Do you do any for-sale properties?
We do not. That's why we're partnering with Habitat.
Okay. This recommendation suggests rental units below 50% AMI, and that's where the real gap is. We need about 2,650 more units with incomes around $35,000. I realize that's very low, and we're talking about 47 that we would add through Habitat for Humanity at 44% AMI. So that is, thank you for bringing that forward because, as you can see, that is a gap that we've been concerned about. And let's see, that's pretty, that's pretty much the major concerns that came out in this report that we've been talking about tonight. So I just want to throw this out and see if, if you have any other, any other items that you can bring forward that address these concerns.
Right now, we're doing the 15%, and we're trying to work with David to maximize that. As he mentioned, you know, the lot sizes, when Public Works gets into it, we're going to try to attain the highest we can.
Okay. Would there be any further accessibility for an aging population? I think we've had this discussion before.
We have, yeah. There's a code requirement through the city of Longmont and also just International Building Code where we have to provide ADA units on the ground floor. So there will be a certain percentage of units, based on the percentage of units in the square footage we build, that have to be wheelchair accessible on the ground floor, yes.
Yeah. Except all these baby boomers are aging, and they're the biggest generation, so I don't know if just a ground floor is going to be enough going forward. So we have this potential storm, you know, approaching. And so, and we're getting low on, on land, so we really have to think about our planning in terms of the way we go forward and what we build on that land. And I was just finishing. Good timing. All right, thank you.
Councilor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. You know, I had a whole script on different housing facts that I guess I don't have to read because it seems like tonight, anyone who sat through this meeting has learned a lot about our housing situation. Councilmember Chris highlighted a few other things that I was going to talk about, so I will be more succinct than I intended to be. You're welcome. You know, welcome back, Tyler.
Good to see you.
The, you know, first of all, just 15% affordable and the, and the clear commitment here is definitely responsive to some of the concerns that were raised. And this, this is a meaningful approach, so I thank you for kind of working behind, you know, between, I guess, February and now to, to bring something forward that this is clearly impact and meaningfully different. I know it doesn't solve all of the concerns that were raised, and I'm not that, not that you necessarily can solve all of those. I'm hopeful that maybe some more of those can be resolved clearly by a serious intent to, to want to move forward here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do want to address a, ask a policy-related question because we talked briefly earlier about House Bill 1272 on the construction defects law. I think you largely addressed this by saying you don't develop for-sale properties. And I just wanted to ask, like, is that like a business model decision generally? Is that a Colorado-specific decision? And?
It is a Colorado-specific decision, yes.
Your company does not develop for-sale properties in Colorado?
Correct.
But you do, your company does in other parts?
We have in the past. We're mainly a rental company, but Colorado is a very litigious state right now.
Noted, okay. Thank you. Regarding the deed restrictions that are mentioned for the for-sale pieces of this, and maybe that's something that David can speak to as well, I know we have, I think for the True North Project, Harold, I think we have deed restrictions reserved or prioritized for existing Longmont residents. Am I correct on that?
We have a preference for Longmont residents. You can't have a deed restriction under fair housing laws, so the way we did it is we have points that people can get in order to qualify in the process, so it's a preference.
Yeah. David, I know Habitat for Humanity is working on housing generally for people and increasing for-sale ownership opportunities. Do you all ever employ a preference there? Is that, what's your preference on that?
We do the, the same thing. It's more of a point system, so.
And there would be, I mean, based on your current operations and intentions, like, you'd probably approach it in a similar way for Longmont residents to have preference, but not exclusivity. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, and thanks for the work that you were doing as well the last few months with, with the development team. What I think we can all agree on here, and people who are watching and people who have emailed me already, and many of whom I get to re-meet again because my audition apparently for this job was the first time this came up, the, what I think we can all agree on is that something's going to be built here. And so the question is, you know, the land, the landowners want to sell their property as is their right. Someone is going to buy it, someone's going to build something. The question is, is this the highest and best use of the site? Highest not in terms of height, but in terms of planning terms. Is this the highest and best use of the site? I don't know. You know, what is proposed here definitely conforms with the zoning under RMN, under envisioned Longmont. You've shown some of the types of units that you're envisioning here as well. You know, we have 47 proposed townhomes or duplex units that would basically mean there'd be 263 rental units as part of this. You know, I don't inherently think that the sheer density is the problem, but design's going to really matter in this and how it integrates into the community. I see the height pieces of this and the story kind of commitments in the concept plan. And I know at this point, we're deciding whether to refer into the annexation process, not look at the concept plan at this moment. Those seem like reasonable guardrails at a, at a starting point, but again, design is really going to be what matters there. Just a couple other clarifications, I think for either Tyler, and sorry, remind me of your name as well?
Ryan.
Ryan, thank you, Ryan. You had mentioned, I think at the beginning, that there was further dedication of a right-of-way and some transportation stuff. Can you just walk us through a little bit more of what that was? Is that a change from before? Or is that just kind of a clarity?
It's clarity. We just want to make sure we understood that kind of all the extra commitments we made previously, we're continuing to do so, and then we're just adding this extra layer to that. So happy to walk through those again if you'd like.
Just on the right-of-way piece specifically?
Sure, so Clover Basin Road on the south side, we have to give extra right-of-way. You can actually see the property line is the red dash line on the property.
Oh, really?
So kind of all of that is what's going to be dedicated as part of that.
The current property line of the side, was it the sidewalk or is it the grass of the property?
Can't tell you exactly what it is right now, just from this.
Okay, but that's not where the road current?
No, the road is offsite. It's only two lanes there.
Yeah.
So it'll be widened to be your, the standard arterial width to meet city Longmont standards there.
So it'd basically be increasing some capacity there. How does that work after the property to the east when, like, is this like a merge lane and then coming back in? Like, what's going on there? Or what's the plan? I know again, we're early.
Hasn't been designed yet, but if you go to the east, right, Clover Basin's been built out to its first, to its full width from, from our property line east. So it'll build onto that, and then what it does is it'll neck down, probably with striping to make it narrower. And then when development happens on the west, it'll widen, they'll be, they'll be required to dedicate whatever's necessary to get to the proper width. They'll be required to dedicate whatever's necessary to get to the proper width there. So that's how that typically works.
Gotcha. Sounds, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Councilor Yarborough.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, can you just kind of real quickly walk us through if this was approved? What's the whole process, the annexation? Can you like spell it out for everybody so they know what this means?
Sure. So not a fast process. If the council votes to refer this application to the full annexation application process, it would require before a formal application is actually submitted, the applicant would be required to do the city facilitated neighborhood meeting, which is a virtual live stream. We've found that to be a very effective way of running them. So we would hold that neighborhood meeting. Following the neighborhood meeting, they could then submit their formal application for annexation. It would then be reviewed by our Development Review Committee, which includes representatives from our Natural Resources Public Works engineering team, stormwater parks, planning, environmental, the full gamut of reviewers. We send it out to outside agencies for review as well, Boulder County, the school district, et cetera. Depending on how many, very rarely does it take one round of review. So usually, we'll go through a couple of rounds of review at least. Once staff is satisfied that their concerns have been addressed, you know, we will work with the applicant, with our legal team, to put together an annexation agreement. We would initiate the public hearing process. So that would be Planning and Zoning Commission, public hearing, city council. Before city council, there would be a resolution round, basically establishing that, yes, it meets the requirements, and we're now going to set the public hearing dates. So it would go through that resolution round. It would go through first reading. It would go through second reading, which is what the public hearing would be. We do public notices at all stages of the review process. So a mailed notice would be sent to all property owners within a 1,000-foot radius of the property boundary, as well as signs posted on the property for at least 14 days ahead of the neighborhood meeting. Upon determining, upon the DRC's determination that we have a complete application that's ready for review, a notice of application would be mailed and posted. And then we would also have separate mailings and postings for the public hearings before Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. So it's definitely, you know, not something that happens lightning-fast. And the public is notified and aware along the way, so.
Okay. Well, I will have to definitely voice my concerns with Councilor Chris about the aging population. We have to start moving forward with an infrastructure for our aging population. And I know that some of those units will be for ADA compliant, but we need more housing that will accommodate people that are aging and not just those, I don't know if it's going to have elevators or anything like that. So design is crucial, definitely for me, to make a difference. And I mean, we can't just keep saying yes, you know, to everything. And then 15 years from now, we're stuck because, you know, our aging population is going to be the largest. And so we got to start preparing for that. So thank you for going through that, everything for me. And I wanted everyone else to hear the whole process of how long it will. We don't actually know how long would that take, how many months would that take?
It's really hard to ballpark. It really depends on how many rounds of review are required. Typically, the first review cycle for annexations would be in the 60-day range and then 45 days for subsequent applications or subsequent reviews. Given the amount of legwork that's already been done upfront, I would expect that we could be looking at a compressed review schedule. So probably in the, you know, six-to-nine-month range. It's hard to say exactly how long it's going to take. But given that, a lot of the legwork has already been done as far as transportation studies, traffic studies, you know, preliminary engineering, I would expect that it would be a faster turnaround review process. But I hate to commit to a specific timeframe. So I think it's reasonable, if the referral were put forward tonight, I think it's reasonable that this council could potentially see a public hearing to vote on the proposed annexation by the end of the year.
Thank you.
That's ambitious, I will say. That is an ambitious schedule.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of people in that area, in the neighborhood, that will be speaking and going to all those meetings too, who would voice their opinions and, as they should.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
Councilor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I just want to thank staff, Jennifer, and Grant for, you know, working through this again. And I want to stress the "again" part. I want to thank David for coming forward with some options, and I really do appreciate that. You know, I hear what Councilmember Yarborough and Chris are talking about in regards to that issue around senior population. And I seriously think all that needs to be addressed in any proposal that we look at from here on out throughout the community. Ryan, I know you're in a difficult position because you're designing something here, and you just can't simply make a soappercus out of a sow's ear. And thank you. It's difficult. I don't really have a question for you, but I appreciate you. It's difficult being in that boat. I do have a problem with the density. The community does not need to be worn down one more time. I feel like this is what that really is designed to do. I think the applicant is literally disconnected with the reality of what the community was saying. And I don't know what, the only motivating thing that I can see here is dollar signs. And I'm not going to be here on this council for forever. But I'll tell you that my feeling is that we can't build our way out of this problem as much as I, you know, it's like the sand on the beach. You just keep digging, and you're not going to get, you know, to the other side of the world, even if you wanted to. And so I don't think that that's a solution. I really think that coming back with 310 units is tone-deaf to what the community was asking for. Yes, they want, we as a council wanted more for-sale units, and I appreciate that. That's why I'm thanking David for doing that. Didn't come from, necessarily from the applicant in my opinion. And I think that if Jennifer would like to answer, is half of that number of 18 still within the scope of our code?
As far as nine units an acre instead of 18, I mean, it's certainly within the range of the medium of the mixed neighborhood designation.
Okay, so what I've heard from the neighborhood is that they weren't against development of this. They wanted it to be much more in line with the surrounding areas. And I think that we have to really listen to that. That's the tone-deaf part that I'm just kind of shocked at from the developer. And I know staff is just like, we'll present whatever you got. And I get that, and we see that all the time. So thank you again for that. So I guess my feeling is here is, I will, if given the opportunity, I would be taking council option two for this. I just think that. But I'm going to wait because I see another person in the queue. But I voiced my opinion on this, and I know where I stand on this. And I thank the people that I think made a sincere effort, and I admonished the ones that didn't. And so, just wanted you to know that that's kind of where I'm at with this. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Hidagel Ferring.
Thank you, Mayor. So, let me pull up, where was it at? Okay, so there were a couple of things that I had made really clear in the beginning. And I understand that one of them cannot happen until this was referred, and the actual community input does come to play. You know, my intent was looking at this and not referring it to formal annexation because I just, I felt like it was the same project as the other one. I appreciate that we have something, you know, the MOU, the understanding too, and it's addressing a segment that is greatly needed. So I appreciate that that is there. But I do want to see, and this is in the past, when I've passed annexations, and you voted yes, that it, I saw a concerted effort of the developer, working with the residents, and modifying. And so just having that willingness to modify and really have that be reflected in the development as a whole. I know in the past, people have commented that over, you know, overpopulated schools, that overcrowdiness. Well, as I look at our district map, they're carved out for Indian Peaks Elementary, and we are a population of less than 200, enrollment of less than 200 students. So we have little, little, little class sizes. I had 15 last year. So they all can come on over to my school. So, yep, so that's, yeah, so I am going to actually make a motion to refer it. It's, and looking at the process, that it does come back to us for a final, for a final vote. But I do want to see that there is a concerted effort and also look into seeing what we can do now that the House bill, and I don't have the number off of my head, 1272. Thank you, you guys are like, your brain power is immense. But to see how that can be, you know, how we can incorporate some more for-sale units. So that's it. But before I move this, can I make, can I move to extend the meeting, like a couple of minutes past 11:00? 10 minutes. Thank you. It's been moved by Mayor Protim Hidagel Ferring, seconded by Councilor Yarborough, to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock for 10 minutes. I don't think we can do that. We have more business. Do we have more business? I thought this was the last one. Oh, okay. Just, I'm going to take the 10 minutes off. Just extend the meeting. Okay, so let's vote. This is the wrong one. Extend the meeting first. I have to do that before I move the other. I haven't moved the annexation referral. I'm a yes. Yes, to extend the meeting. This was the item that we were up late, and we did not extend the meeting. And I thought it was a huge disservice to the community. So. This is to extend the meeting.
One minute for you all to vote yes on that.
Chop, chop.
Four seconds.
I've got the timer on. Okay. It passed. Aaron did not vote for it. Okay, it passed 6 to 1. No, the screen's off. It passed 6 to 1 with Councilor Rodriguez opposing. Okay, now we need a second for, did somebody second? Yeah. And did you, did you get kind of the essence of what I was asking for? So that's, you know, so when it does come back, I just want to see that concerted effort. Thank you. Councilmember Popkin seconded Mayor Protim Hidagel Ferring's motion to refer this to the annexation, for annexation. Whoa. Councilor Chris.
Oh, okay. Well, this is a rather long process to not be providing what might get an ultimate yes in the end. So I guess I'm wondering, Tyler, we've talked about House Bill 25-1272. And we worked very hard to get that passed through our legislature. So if it is not adequate, we need to know now what else we want to press them about to make sure that we can have for-sale housing, condo-type housing. And actually, probably have the most recent condos were built in my ward, and it's the village co-op, and it's senior housing, and they are full. And I'm not sure how they got it passed. But that was in the last five years? Yeah. And the thing is that that's what people want. They want a finish, you know, a place to retire and a place to start. And those retirement cottages or condos become beginner condos for the next generation. So it's an investment in the future as well. So please tell us what else Colorado needs to do to make that useful, especially Longmont. But it would have to go through our legislature, of course. So if you could speak to that?
Not right now?
No.
No, okay. Never mind. Thank you. But yes, I would like to know that because I hate to say, I hate to refer this and have all these other issues that are going to come up and frustrate you. I want it to be, this is what we're getting into together. I want it to be more of a partnership. So totally appreciate what you've brought back and that you've heard us thus far. I just want to take it down the road another level and make this useful across the board. And also, that is nice transitional housing between apartments. And standalone housing is condos. That is also in Ward 1. I should have, we shall go on a tour in my neighborhood because it works very nicely there.
Are you finished? Okay. Councilor Popkin, three minutes.
Oh, I know the rules. Just a couple of things for the record. In the, actually, on February 4th, in that meeting, we discussed a thing on the concept plan, specifically on the EVA access point, to make that gated. I think the developer said that on the record, that they were comfortable with that. I didn't see it in the updated concept plan, but I trust that that will be incorporated in, in respect to the HOA to the north of this property. I see head nods. I appreciate that. The coordination, just a clarification question for staff. One of the concerns that was raised last time this came before us was that there was an adjacent property moving through the annexation process. And genuinely, I don't, we haven't seen it yet. And so I'm genuinely curious, you know, where in the process is that? And, you know, what's possible to expect there in any reasonable modicum of timeframe?
So I did get information from the planner who's handling that project. It's known as the Dry Creek Annexation. They are currently on their third round of review and are looking at probably scheduling public hearings in late summer, early fall. So tracking a little bit, is tracking ahead of where this project would be.
And so then, if I could reasonably interpret that, what that effectively means if that moves on that timeframe is we'll know what that's generally going to look like at a, at least at a practical conceptual level to understand that as this reenters the process, if this is effectively referred, we will then have a sense of how this would integrate with that and some of the potential transportation flows and other connectivity, right?
Potentially, yes.
I know it's not. You can't say definitively, but it is much more likely in this sequence than last time for us to be able to do that. Cool, thank you. Cool, thank you. Look, I think this is meaningfully improved. I think my fellow council members have both raised some other points that I agree with that I hope the development team takes seriously because I'm not sure that this would get an affirmative vote today if this came back for us. So, I just raised that for the developer's awareness. I think it is, it's, it's not there yet, but it's moving in the right direction. I also wanna recognize that my fellow council members are kind of trying to have their cake and eat it too, I think, to some degree in, in trying to create a perfect world where we want more for-sale affordable housing at this threshold, which is, I think, unprecedented in habitats experience here, and also try to add more things that might make this just not pencil out at the end. And so, we do have to be cognizant of that. I do hope that we figure out some other ways to address at least some of the other meaningful comments that neighbors and residents and my fellow council members have raised. And I look forward to working with folks to do that. Last comment, this is the first time I've seen an annexation referral process, I believe, since I was on council. And council referred this to annexation March 2024 the first time. That took a lot of time from staff, the developer, Planning and Zoning Commission, council, and residents on multiple occasions. So, if we move this forward, I hope council is willing to take this seriously and so that it doesn't go through a whole cycle again only just to go through the motions and, and waste everyone's time. I see a meaningful effort from the developer that I think can be built on, and so I'm willing to, to put that forward, to second this, and, and I, I hope the developer takes that seriously for everyone's sake.
Counselor Yarborough.
Yeah, I, listening to you make me, not, it's not a bad thing, Counselor Popkin, but.
Listening to you?
Listening to you. You know.
I'd like to weigh in on that.
You know, if we, I, I also, again, agree with Counselor Chris because if we know without a shadow of a doubt that we are going, we won't, we will only have 47 for-sale homes, and there's no possibility of no, any more for-sale property, homes on that property, then why are we referring it? If that's what we really wanted to do? That's my whole point. And if they can't build homes on, in the state of Colorado, then why are we referring it? I don't, I don't understand. It's not like half of it is going to be rental properties, and like 150 gonna be rental properties, and the rest are, 75 gonna be town homes, and the rest are gonna be Habitat for Humanity. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about referring it so we can go through this process again and then come back, and he's gonna say, no, we're gonna have 310 rental properties. So. Well, 263. It's after 11 o'clock. Show somebody some grace, especially me. So, you know, for me personally, if we as a council want more affordable housing, and that's the whole point, and the neighborhood has told us over and over again what they're looking for, they're not opposed to properties being built over there, they just want more for, for housing for purchase. That's what they told us. So, they're not opposed to building over there. They're not saying nothing about not having anything built. So, anyway, I'm gonna vote against it because of referring it, because of that. If they're gonna come back and say that we're only gonna have 47 for property, for-sale properties over there, then we're back at where we started. I mean, with a few more for-sale properties for me, to me. That's, that's me. Now, if you wanna argue that, not you, Mr. Popkin. Anybody else? Hell, you got something to say about that? Okay. Just, just saying. Audrey? No one else? Jennifer? Oh, okay, everybody good and quiet. Okay, oh, oh, here we go, yeah, come on. It's after 11:00. Erin said, go for it. Anyway, that's, that's my two cents, five cents.
Okay. Well, the other thing that we want are attainable housing, too, not just totally affordable because that is where we're missing, that missing middle. So, if these are all market value, then that doesn't really meet what we need either. So, can you make some of them attainable?
Technically, 75 to 100% AMI is attainable.
Yeah.
Yeah, but rental, that we need.
Still attainable rental.
Still attainable rental, but we need.
Well, anyway, let's vote. We have talked about this enough. Am I the only one missing? I'm gonna vote yes. My computer doesn't like me. And it passes four to three with, with Counselor Crist, McCoy, and Yarborough opposing. Thank you, everyone. Sorry, we're not just crazy about this, but. We are now at board and commission appointments, and we're going to do those first, and then we will convene into the Longmont Housing Authority and do theirs.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Don Quintana, City Clerk. I distributed to you all a packet of ballots. Please ensure that you are voting your ballot because your names should be on them. You have backup copies in case we need to vote again. So, you would vote the first one. It was in the stack when I distributed, so let's, there it is. Somebody is borrowing your ballot. This is not allowed. So, what I would like you, if you could vote your ballot, and then what we're gonna do is pull up the spreadsheet and tally your votes. Sandy's gonna help me with that part, and then we'll see where we're at. See how we go. It's one big ballot for all, you just have to go once. Yeah, we're trying to be more efficient. Yeah, we'll see. Oh, Sandy's gone. We are trying something new after the appointment process that was smooth. That's too hard. There's two, 2027, yep. You're welcome. Yes, bless you, that was. Somebody's allergic to counsel. I'm.
I know, that's what I, that's what I'm used to. That was, yeah, that's what he did.
What?
He, he doxed you.
Oh, don't, we just, we gossiping, we shouldn't be gossiping.
Nope.
Nope.
Here, Suzie, give me a cup, I'm gonna spill some tea.
Spill the tea.
I don't know you guys.
You know, we get giggle, giggly, or mean, one or the other. You want us to giggle, or you want us to be mean? So, 11:15.
We'll be mean and giggle about it.
Did I get trouble with?
Oh, did you need the housing authority room?
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right.
You want the housing authority as well?
No.
He don't hassle me for talking after 11:00. I usually vote. Look at this town, it's like, all right.
My brain. You are? Oh, you mean, oh, never mind.
No, I wouldn't, that would've occurred to me.
I'm gonna read them out loud, you ready?
Yep.
By council member, by board? Okay, Airport Advisory Board? Here, let me put them in the right order that you have in there. Mm-hmm, they shouldn't crack them that way.
Oh, yeah. That was its name? Lago? Did that?
Rodriguez Yarborough. Okay, I am ready. Okay, Airport Advisory Board, Councilmember Chris voted for Terra Mensa. Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring for Terra Mensa. Councilmember McCoy for Terra Mensa. Mayor Peck for Jeremy Cornrich Reich. Councilmember Popkin for Terra Mensa. Rodriguez for Jeremy Cornreich. And Councilmember Yarborough for Terra Mensa.
Thank you. So, Tara will be the appointee for the term ending December 31st, 2025.
AIPP. 123125.
It's an unexpired term, yeah, so we're filling a spot. Yes.
AIPP. So, Councilmember Crist voted for all three.
So, to be clear, we have three, three seats, or five seats, three applicants.
Yes.
Hidalgo Ferring, all three.
All three.
Thank you.
McCoy, Rhonda, and Randy. Mayor Peck for all three. Councilmember Popkin, Rhonda, and Randy. Councilmember Rodriguez, Rhonda, and Randy. Councilmember Yarborough, Rhonda, and Randy.
Okay, so it looks like on that one, then, for AIPP, Rhonda, Bopray, and Randy.
Long.
Long are appointed, and we will have three vacancies writing for Art and Public Places. I'm sorry, say that again? They are, I've heard they want to bring that forward, but I haven't seen it yet. Yeah. Board of Adjustment and Appeals has seven vacancies, no applicants, so just subtle, empty board there. Onto Golf Advisory, two, two seats for 2027 terms.
Very good. Councilmember Crist for William Davis and Mark Springfield. Hidalgo Ferring for William Davis and Mark Springfield. McCoy for William Hazel and Mark Springfield. Mayor Peck for William, for William Davis and Mark Springfield. Popkin for William Davis and William Hazel. Rodriguez for William Davis and Mark Springfield. Yarborough for William Davis and William Hazel.
So, your two appointees there will be William Davis and Mark Springfield. So, you could do the 2026 term by motion, if you like, because you appointed Davis and Springfield, leaving only other candidates, William Hazel. Let me get to the right page here, I'm sorry.
Since the clerk's not at the voting thing.
Councilmember McCoy seconded by Councilmember Crist to appoint William Hazel to the 2026 seat, okay?
We need to vote on it, though, right?
Correct. All in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or raise your hand.
Thank you. Onto the library.
Library Board. Councilmember Crist for Jamie Quirk. Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring for Jamie Quirk. Councilmember McCoy for Jamie Quirk. Mayor Peck for Sarah Flynn. Councilmember Popkin for Jamie Quirk. Councilmember Rodriguez for Jamie Quirk. And Councilmember Yarborough for Jamie Quirk.
Great, thank you. Jamie Quirk will be reappointed to the Library Board. MOPC, you had one applicant, Angela Brill. You could vote on that by motion, or is there a ballot?
There's one for Master Board of Appeals first.
I put that one at the end.
Okay.
Let me just scroll there. Because it was laid out differently, it's a different question. Let me go.
Oh, okay.
I didn't wanna mess up my formatting. Okay, so the Master Board of Appeals has one applicant, John Lennon, which is his real name, incidentally. So, the question is if you wanna appoint John Lennon, and if so, to which term?
Okay, so Councilmember Chris says for one unexpired term ending in 27. One unexpired alternate team.
Term, okay.
Yep, sorry.
Okay.
Mayor Protim Hidalgo Ferring said the same thing, one unexpired alternate member term. McCoy said the same thing, one unexpired term, alternate term.
27.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Councilmember McCoy, you can just make that motion if you choose.
Three. You would, until a regular member were appointed. Would, it wouldn't be till the end of the year we'd re-recruit. I'm not hearing a second for your motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Yarborough said one unexpired term ending in 26.
Well, Yarborough already did.
Councilmember Rodriguez is just saying it's, it's a matter of perspective, that's right.
Yeah. So, you do have a second on your motion. Councilmember McCoy.
What was the motion?
To appoint to the regular member term instead of to the alternate term.
Okay, let's vote.
One unexpired term, 123126.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, now MOPC.
Now MOPC, which could also be a motion, since you have one candidate, if you wanted to do MOPC that way.
I move to appoint Angela Brill to MOPC.
All those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Onto the museum, three seats, four candidates.
Councilmember Crist has Ly, has Linda Bushenbaum, Sheila Conroy, and Catherine Cox. Mayor Protim has Linda Boschenber, Bosch. Goodness, I'm sorry. Sheila Conroy and Catherine Cox. Great, so we have three appointees, Linda, I'm gonna say Bucksbaum, Sheila Conroy and Catherine Cox.
Thank you, moving on to sustainability advisory board, three regular member terms, multiple applicants here. Council member Chris for Jeffrey, Gary and Alec. Mayor Protem Hidalgo Ferring for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Alec. Council member McCoy for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Gary. Mayor Peck for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Alec. Council member Popkin for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Gary. Council member Rodriguez for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Alec. Council member McCoy for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Gary. Mayor Peck for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Alec. Council member Popkin for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Gary. Council member Rodriguez for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Alec. Council member Yarborough for Jeffrey, Alyssa and Alec.
Harold, you're watching me, right? Okay, thank you. Just make sure somebody's controlling my, doing a QC on my entry here. So sustainability, we will have Jeffrey, I don't know how to say his last name, Alyssa Harding and Alec Solomeo as your appointees. Moving on to transportation, first we will do the two people for the two thousand and twenty eight term, which was the first ballot there, correct, Sandy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Council member Chris is for Kimberly and Ross. Mayor Protem for Ross and Taylor. Council member McCoy. Council member McCoy for Ross. Mayor Peck for Ross and Taylor. Council member Popkin for Taylor. Council member Rodriguez for Ross and Taylor. Council member Yarborough for Ross and Taylor.
Okay, so Ross Sterrett and Taylor Wicklund are the appointees to the two thousand and twenty eight term, which leaves only one applicant, Kimberly Rifele. You could do by motion if you wanted to, or we can do the.
I move, we apply Kimberly Rifele to the unexpired term for two thousand and twenty six.
Second, let's vote. Yeah, but she applied. We weren't able to get her to, yeah. They did not interview her, not at all, right. Yep, so.
We're not required to tell us.
Not required, no.
But there's a motion on the.
But there's a motion on the floor, so we should either finish that motion or withdraw. Withdraw the motion, please. It was council member Chris. You made the motion.
I withdraw the motion.
All right, I second that withdrawal. Okay. So leave that vacancy open, we're on to water board, one seat, lots of applicants, which is a good scenario for the water board, all right.
Council member Chris voted for Roger Lang. Mayor Protem for Roger Lang. Council member McCoy for Roger Lang. Mayor Peck for Roger Lang. Council member Popkin for Roger Lang. Council member Rodriguez for Roger Lang. And council member Yarborough for Roger Lang.
There you have it, Roger Lang for the continue to serve on the water board. That completes, I don't think we missed anything, I think that worked, that worked better, yeah, okay. Good job. Much better, I thought so. Can I? Thank you, I was gonna say a motion to recess. Yeah. We have a motion to recess at the Longmont City Council, convene at the Longmont Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. All right, it's been moved by myself, seconded by Popkin. Popkin. Need a vote? Yes, let's vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are convened. Very good, then you have the same exact thing, you have a ballot for the LHA advisory board. One position in the regular term ending two thousand and twenty seven, two for regular terms ending two thousand and twenty eight. Do you all have a preference for whether we do the two thousand and twenty eight or the two thousand and twenty seven first, maybe do the?
Whatever you like.
The two seats, the longer term, we'll do that one first? You just got, the third box is a duplicate, isn't it? I don't have a copy of the ballot, because I'm not an lecturer in this. It is, it is in case they need an extra, yeah. Okay, never mind. Of course.
Okay, first people are not going to talk long.
Okay. Council member Chris for Tom DeBie. Mayor Protem for Tom DeBie and Jenna Reed. Council member McCoy for Tom DeBie and Joshua Rinaldi. Mayor Peck for Tom DeBie and Sandy Denny. Council member Popkin for Jenna Reed. Council member Rodriguez for Jenna Reed. Council member Yarborough for Tom DeBie. Okay, so we have Tom DeBie, and then we will need to revote on that second seat. You have a second copy of that ballot? So don't select Tom DeBie, mark him off your ballot, because he's already been appointed. For the twenty, second two thousand and twenty eight term.
Are you ready, Dawn? Ready? Yep. Okay. Okay, council member Chris for Jenna Reed. Mayor Protem. I, I think you hit the wrong.
Was it the second box?
Box, yeah, yeah, is that who you meant for the two thousand and twenty eight term?
Two thousand and twenty eight term, Jenna Reed.
Yes, Jenna Reed, okay. And council member McCoy, Sandy Denny and Jenna Reed. Oh, we're just one. Jenna Reed. Okay, Mayor Peck, Sandy Denny.
Hang on, hang on.
Oh, council member Popkin, you have two also, Jenna Reed or Joshua Rinaldi, you just need one.
We already appointed the one, Tom DeBie, so we just need the second person here. This is on the twenty eight term. Right, Tom was, Tom was appointed in the first round of votes. We didn't select a second person in the second round, so we're just voting on one for the second round. I apologize.
Very good, council member Rodriguez, Jenna Reed. And council member Yarborough, Jenna Reed.
Okay, so the second person in the two thousand and twenty eight term, the two people will be Tom DeBie and Jenna Reed. Now we will, maybe we do need to vote again, because my guess is you may have voted for these people on.
Let me, let me take a quick look, Dawn, because I don't think so.
We've got them, DeBie and Reed. We haven't done that yet, we haven't done the twenty seven seat yet.
I think, I think you're okay.
No.
Yeah, I think, I think you're okay, let's just.
Okay, okay.
Let's just take a look and see. In ballot one, the one unexpired term ending two thousand and twenty seven, ready?
Ready.
Joshua, council member Chris said Joshua Rinaldi. Mayor Protem did not vote for that one.
Okay.
Council member McCoy, John Fallon. Mayor Peck, Jenna Reed, of course, is now.
She was already appointed, right?
Right, but that's where, that's where she was. Council member Popkin, Joshua Rinaldi. Sorry, it's sticking together. Tom DeBie, which.
Which we already, right.
Yep, and then council member Yarborough, Joshua Rinaldi.
Yeah, so we do need to revote, yeah, we don't have enough votes, so.
If I make a motion to appoint Joshua Rinaldi.
I like that. So, I'm sorry, who voted, who dissented, oh, okay.
Six one.
Got it, and then we just need a motion to reconvene. I see what happened. A councillor McCoy to reconvene is the Longmont City Council, and seconded by. Council member Popkin. Thank you, Dawn. Yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now back as the Longmont City Council. Thank you. And we are done with that, we're moving on to the final call, public invited to be heard. I'm gonna leave it up to you to come in order, whatever order.
Good evening again, it's me again, Frost Arar, at ten, six fifty, North Seventy Fifth Street, and I'll try to keep this as brief. I actually am a proponent of roundabouts, I prefer them over traffic lights, however, in regards to the quail, the potential, the quail property, when I heard about the proposed location for that roundabout, to me, that sounded dangerous, never mind deadly. So, for better for worse, if and when you choose to go forward with this eventual annexation, all I ask is that you please try to include the underlying principles of vision zero in this project, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, mayor, oh, thank you, mayor, and mayor Protem and council, my name is David Kimmitt, ninety five thirty six Schlegel Street, Longmont, eight zero five zero three. My wife did a little bit of research yesterday on Redfin, interestingly enough, Longmont and Boulder have roughly the same population, as we already know. Boulder has half the number of units for sustainable, excuse me, you might be surprised here, that Boulder has half the number of units for sale for the attainable price of four hundred thousand dollars or less. Other way, Longmont has ha, this is how tired I am, Longmont has half the units for sale at the attainable price of four hundred thousand dollars or less right now. Boulder has eighty nine units for sale, Longmont has forty three units for sale on the market, in a population that's roughly the same. We need more attainable housing, and more affordable housing. We have a wonderful and fundamental change in state laws, everyone knows, House Bill twenty five, twelve seventy two, is a game changer for Longmont. I would hold the developer's feet to the fire on his statement that the market, or the price point that he's looking at is seventy five percent to one hundred percent. We've been burned by this developer in the past, as everyone knows, and I appreciate the critical eye that each of you put on him today, each of you did, and they need this. It strikes me as odd that he states Vista Residential Partners does develop condominiums in other markets, but not Colorado, because it's too litigious, I'm not sure where that comes from, especially now with this change in state law. Last, not last, one thing I would like to say is, I was one of the two community members who attended the launch meeting last night at Ferris Pool Hall, that was mentioned by the treasurer of launch. And not once did I mention anything about being against renters, that's, I have nothing against renters, I have been a renter in my life, I'll probably be a renter again in my life. I have nothing against renters, so I'm not sure where that comment came from, perhaps a different conversation, I don't know. I'm just for, for sale units, we need those, we need something to, to develop this city in a way that provides opportunity and equity for the youth that is on its way, and for those who are entering the retirement age. We've gotta do it, and now's our chance on a seventeen acre piece of land. We also have to seriously, as I encouraged council back in February, consider a developer's agreement between the two annexations. Those two annexations are critical to have a, the infrastructure provided for a transportation sense to, for ingress and egress, if they are considered separately, we'll end up with problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Linda Bitner, ninety four fifty five North Eightieth Ninth Street, neighbor of Dave's, and first of all, thank you all for staying so late, I know it's, I know it's late, thanks to the staff, hardworking staff. One of my observations earlier was, I was really impressed with the level of, of work and effort that went into the various reports that I heard about the audit and the housing, I mean, immense research and analysis. And one thing that struck me with the proposed ordinance about sitting and kneeling is I didn't hear any data presented, I mean, how many businesses have complained? How many contacts have there been with people who are, are behaving in this way? How much would it cost to put up signage? So anyway, I didn't hear that data, and it seemed like a disconnect, because the other departments are doing so much data gathering and presentation. As far as the Schlegel development goes, I am thrilled with seeing more of the Habitat, when, after the neighborhood meeting a year ago, more than a year ago now, in my comments for the application, I said I wanted to see Habitat housing. And so, no objections, I think it's great, the more, the better, but we do need that missing middle, you know, I have friends, they are retired, living on social security, eighteen hundred dollars a month. Our new market rate apartments cost more than two thousand dollars a month. If you drive down Nelson now, west of Target, there's the big four story units, but just a little further west, past those two little ranch houses that are now isolated, there are these many blocks, or many buildings, three story highs, and now they have put up signs along the right of ways, advertising all the wonderful amenities, they have a yoga studio, they have a cold plunge, they have a spa, they have a workshop for bike repair, for ski repair. Does that sound like something that people who don't have a lot of money need or can afford? They can't, and so I think what we really want, most of my neighbors want to see with this development, is that missing middle. And maybe it doesn't have to be for sale, but at least some rentals that come in. And maybe it doesn't have to be for sale, but at least some rentals that come in at a level where a teacher... I mean, I looked up the salary range for last school year, they start at $62,000 a year. Doesn't sound bad, but it's $5,000 a month. Gross, well, 40% of that is $2,000. That's what they would be spending on one of these new apartments, and that's barely affordable. I did it when I was first starting out. I spent 49% of my gross income on my house payment, and that was really, really tough. But at least I was getting a house. It wasn't just going to an out-of-state hedge fund that is making no difference. You know, they'll have a couple of jobs, they'll have a leasing agent, but all the money will go out of state. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I'm going to close, final call, public invited to be heard. City manager, remarks?
That's Mayor Council.
City attorney?
No comments, Mayor.
City Council? Councilor Yarborough?
Only comment, thank you, Mayor, only comment is, please come out Saturday to Juneteenth from 3 to 7 at Roosevelt Park. We're going to have African drumming and dancing, we're going to have a fashion show that will display fashion from our local boutiques here in Longmont. We've got bands, we're going to have a scavenger hunt, and Joe Nagusa will be there, he's going to help kick it off. And it's going to be hot, so bring your ice water bottle, okay? We'll try to refill it, bring your cooling towel, whatever, we all know it's going to be hot. So, no excuses, I want to see you all there. Thank you so much.
God, she's bossing tonight. All those in favor? We are adjourned.